Everybody, we are going to get started with, we'll be seeing it, well now the commission is rolling in, we have a number of texts from people who are arriving as we go, so please don't be worried as people walk in, they'll all have your due attention. I want to thank everyone for coming here today. Before we begin, by the way, I want to note, because I've been told several times, that we are live, or at least live for purposes of the microphones, and being recorded here by Plymouth Community Television, videotaping the meetings. Everything that you say would be held against you, but thank you for coming to our eighth convening of our Promote/Prevent Commission. I want to thank Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital here in Plymouth. There's a reason why this is our first meeting outside of the State House and that we're coming here, because you have been leaders in this work trying to prevent behavioral health disorders, trying to promote different preventive factors. We're so thrilled to be able to come here and to hear from our first special public hearing. I want to note that one thank you to the Beth Israel Deaconess President Kevin Cofflin, who I know will be saying, "Well, thanks just a few moments." Thank you so much for having us, but also just for your staff. One, you have held a tremendous word. Jen Pinto, who contacted us and came and testified at the State House at a prior hearing. Andrea Halloran, thank you so much Andrea, for Chris Smalley, and all the other wonderful BID staff helped put this show on today. By the way, there are lots of familiar faces who are here today, and we'll be hearing from a number of you just in a few moments, but I want to make sure that we just do an overview, both for the purposes of cable and for those who may not be familiar with the work of our special commission. Our special commission of Behavioral Health Promotion and Upstream Prevention, we're tasked with investigating evidence-based practices, programs and systems to prevent behavioral health disorders and to promote behavioral health across the Commonwealth. Our commission charged for the 24 commissioners and others who have been helping us, first of all, we're learning what has been effective in behavioral promotion and upstream prevention. Secondly, how do we fund what is working? An issue that I know we'll address here today. The third, what can we achieve with that funding over a period of time, one year, five years, 20 years? We have had numerous hearings, as I mentioned, this is our eighth hearing of this commission. Our very first was the state of the state of behavioral health. We featured in the United States Senator Ed Markey, who came to talk about what was happening at the national level. We had Secretary of Human Services Secretary Mary Lou Sutter, who talked at the state level, the Commissioners McCular, Department of Mental Health, and Commissioner Burrell of Department of Public Health, members who are on this right commission, and the Chief Justice Paula Carey, who is on this commission, who is represented today and always by Honorable Rosemary Minahan, who did so much work down here when you were the Chief Justice here for Plymouth District Court. Our second meeting, by the way, was the promise of prevention. At that meeting, we featured leading minds from around the nation who were discussing issues for behavioral prevention. The leading minds were from the Institute of Medicine, the Paxus Institute, and the Pew Charitable Trust Results First Initiative. This commission, we have now a national attention for both Pew Charitable Trust and the MacArthur Foundation. We're very excited to have their assistance. Our June meeting focused on how we're going to pay for all these issues, and we have some great work being done there by one of our subcommittees, hopefully being able to bring back more resources to Beth Israel Deaconess and others. We had our first public hearing in July when Jen Pinto came and testified, and this fall we're holding meetings on mental health and violence prevention. In fact, we actually had one, just where we had testimony from a mother of a child who lost his life at Sandy Hook, talking about the importance of doing programs right in the schools. Everyone who is either watching on cable or people who are here, you can get the notes and the videos of each of these prior hearings online at promoteprevent.com. The hearing basics, for those who came in a little bit later, if you do want to come and testify, we're leading with the experts from Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital. If others are here who wish to testify, please sign up outside. We'll be taking testifiers in the order that they've signed up. Testimony, other than for the panel here, testimony for others is limited to three minutes. We can adjust on that, but we're doing three minutes because we know our wonderful district attorney usually takes about an hour or two. Tim Cruz is here, thank you, Tim. We are not focused, we are not focused on treatment or recovery systems. All of our focus will be on behavioral health promotion, upstream prevention. We encourage you to have written testimony as well of your comments if you do not get time to get them all together. Feel free to tweet about the hearing, just as the justice is to my right, and before we get started, I want to make sure that our commissioners can introduce themselves. There will be others who will be, as a matter of fact, I think we're going to hold until a few folks come, a few others come. We'll introduce others as they come in?
Yeah.
Do you want to do round robin first, or?
Yeah, that's good.
Round robin now, or?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to start with a round robin, starting to my far left, just so you know who you're testifying before, and then we want to make sure to start with Kevin Cofflin, so, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Fringulis with Massachusetts Organization for Division of Recovery and Recovery.
Hi, I'm Hannah Gilman, I work for the Association for Behavioral Healthcare, where the community-based provider association.
Ben Thomas, Team Cantwell.
Jim Cantwell, I'm proud, I represent Marshfield and Situit in the legislature, and I'm the co-chair of our Behavioral Health Commission, we call it the Promote/Prevent Commission.
Rosemary Minahan, trial court.
Steve Sidlavage, Legislative Director for Department of Mental Health.
Tracy McMillan, Director of Bureau of Managed Care, Massachusetts Division of Insurance.
I'm Phil Castle, I'm the Executive Director of Mental Health Legal Advisors Committee, we're a statewide advocacy agency.
At this point, we'd be pleased to introduce the President for Beth Israel Deaconess, Kevin Cofflin. Kevin, thank you for having us.
Thank you. You may not get picked up by cable, but can you guys hear? All right, good. So, thank you Representative Cantwell, members of the special commission, appreciate you choosing our hospital to come and listen to our staff and to members of our community that believe this is a serious issue that needs to be dealt with. Behavioral health, opioid addiction, drug addiction in general, mental health treatment, something that this organization has focused a tremendous amount of resources on because the people in this community need it. We have kids, adults, grandparents dying in this hospital every day as a result of both of those issues. We appreciate the focus, we look forward to solutions, and this team of people sitting at the table representing us, who have spent day and night working on this problem, have insights that they'd like to share with you, and we appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you so very much for having us, and I want you to note that one of the reasons why we started here is because of the tremendous work of the folks here before us, your staff. We also, we are here with your predecessor, Peter Holden, just several years ago, when the, at that point, the Chairman of our Healthcare Financing Committee, now Chairman of Ways and Means, came down, and we were with Bob Delio, the Speaker of the House, but I was speaking, Gary, you'd spoke at that point, the Chief Justice to my right was speaking at that point, so we know of the great work of Beth Israel Deaconess, and we're here largely because of these experts before us. So, I want to turn it over to your panel, I don't know if, Doctor, if you were going to be the first to open, and introduce folks, please.
Good morning, Honorable Members of the Commission, and thank you for coming down to Plymouth on this beautiful fall day, and for this opportunity. I'm Danny Mendoza, I'm the Chair of the Department of Psychiatry. I'm hoping to add texture to the daily narrative that you're all dealing with, this opioid epidemic. What's interesting is that this is not new. Going back to 2001, I heard about kids in Norwood starting to deal with opioid overdoses, and I said Norwood, and it's only gotten worse. As frontline clinicians, we've been dealing with substance use disorders for more than 20 years. It's not just opioid withdrawal, it's alcohol withdrawal, alcohol intoxication. What's new is that this opioid epidemic and its immense tragedy has given us as frontline clinicians a new pulley pulpit. Nurses, physicians no longer say to us, "Take care of your patient." There is a growing sense of urgency and ownership, as this is no longer an inner-city problem. We all have friends or neighbors who have lost loved ones. This does not just affect Brockton, it affects Duxbury, Hangham, Plymouth, it transcends socioeconomic classes and age groups. As Kevin alluded to, I have 55-year-old grandmothers who overdose on heroin. What I'm hoping to do is introduce you to members of our team, including the people behind us, and have them go through experiences as we implemented the CHART grant. This grant gave us an opportunity to address the greater Plymouth area in terms of its behavioral health and substance use disorders. There were three patient populations, the ED behavioral health population, the integrated care model, where we embedded and eventually integrated behavioral health clinicians in primary care practices, and also the complex care population, which we've come to realize as we reviewed every single case, represents the failure of our inability to intervene when these people were adolescents. This was a humbling but constructive learning experience, but it has given us fresh perspectives and maybe a grasp of interventions, including potentially prevention initiatives that we're hoping to initiate and continue. So, as I alluded to, this will take real ownership, leadership, and commitment, and as I mentioned when we started implementing the grant, this is not a BI initiative, this is a community initiative. We wanted to ensure that everyone buys in, all our community partners buy in. As you will find out, there are immense challenges in doing it that way, but we're not giving up on that, because we can't do this as a hospital alone. Sorry, let me put my glasses on. Vanity gets in the way. There were 11,884 opioid-related incidents in Massachusetts, and in Plymouth County, 151 opioid deaths. There were 18 opioid deaths in the town of Plymouth, and 1,526 opioid deaths in Massachusetts. This graphic gives you a sense of the extreme urgency in our area. And our implementing the CHART grant gave us an opportunity to interact with Mass Health Behavioral, the Health Policy Commission, and Health and Human Services, and I remember the former Under-Secretary of Health and Human Services telling us, as we tried to present potential outside-the-box initiatives, "You have the most difficult area." I'm not sure if she was upset, but it gave us a sense of the gravity of the situation and a sense of the frustration. More recently, if you read the Boston Globe, and since we all get our medical knowledge from the Globe, Scott Weiner is an ED physician at Brigham and Women's Hospital, and they reviewed data collected by the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts, including EMS, hospital, and death records. They examined what became of 12,192 people who were administered naloxone by EMS in Massachusetts between July 1, 2013, and December 31, 2015. Naloxone saved most lives, only 6.5% died the day they received the medication, but among those who survived the first day, 9.9% died within a year, and their median age was 54. Again, transcends all age groups. Among those who died, nearly 40% died outside of the hospital, and more than half passed away in the first month. Going back to Plymouth, there was a Health Resources in Action study that basically validated there is widespread mental health issues in conjunction with substance use disorders. We have significant barriers to care and health, including the stigma of taking care of the patients that we're hoping to address with the Integrated Care Initiative, transportation issues, this is a big county, not a lot of public transportation, and housing. We do a very poor job with homeless people, and employment, and there's a profound lack of behavioral health providers and services, and as I learned over the 30 years or so out of residency, that there are more psychiatrists in Newton than any other part of the world, but as you cross 128, it dwindles down dramatically, and if you cross 495, it's even less. And the fact that this hospital is 30 miles away from its nearest competitor, it's a real issue. That being said, there are unique opportunities for addressing the entire South Shore population from our vantage point between BID Milton, which also ran its own CHART program, and also South Shore Hospital, and there is a compelling reason to do that clinically. Our patients go to all three hospitals, they shop for doctors, and if we try to use this opportunity to manage the population, that's an opportunity which I'll circle back to later. Primary care physicians are not only burdened by the sheer volume of patients they have to see, they don't have the skill set nor the time to deal with a patient who is dealing with substance use, pain, and mental health issues. And this is where the ICI initiative will give you some perspective. The emergency department is overburdened. Each and every time a patient gets stuck in the ED, that's $2,200, that's spent on that bed, that could have gone to somebody else, presenting with an acute systemic issue, but those patients are stuck because of issues finding them the right intervention. There's a lot of lack of positive youth activities, and we'll give you a sense of what we tried to do and what we're hoping to do. Kids have nothing to do after school ends, and until mom or dad gets in, and those are the dangerous times in the household. And there's a lack of community engagement, which I think is starting to diminish as people start realizing that there are more and more friends and neighbors that are struggling with this. So, with this in mind, I'd like you to listen to Sarah Cloud, who is our Director of Social Work, and also has had a unique experience running an emergency service provider program.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. You know, I think Dr. Mendoza did a really great job outlining and setting the context for sharing what we've been doing here. Again, it's not, we can emphasize enough that this really isn't about what we're doing here at the hospital, it really is about what we're doing here in the community and what the role, and how we maybe redefine our role as a hospital in the community in partnering with all of the stakeholders, and really specifically the individual who has a need of services, and very importantly, their family. So, as Dr. Mendoza had kind of outlined, we launched, we were very fortunate to launch the CHART grant on October 1st of 2015 with the Integrated Healthcare and Substance Use Collaboration, a grant through the Health Policy Commission. And I think what was really invaluable to us, and sometimes challenging and maybe painful, was it really wasn't funding to deliver services, it was funding to really look at what works, and really push and provide consultation, technical assistance on what, how can we hone on what, further in and hardwire what works, and how can we let go of what doesn't work? And I think there's some really important lessons learned that we have taken away from this process and have hardwired into our system and in our community in terms of what has worked. And I wanted to share a little bit of that briefly with you today. What has worked is embedding specialists, behavioral health specialists, nurse practitioners, clinicians, psychiatrists, and after-care specialists within the medical team, and also to reach out throughout to the community, not just to be focused and remain within the role of just the, within just the hospital, within just primary care practices. And that's had some fantastic outcomes in terms of decreasing the length of stay in the emergency room, decreasing revisits, the need for revisits to the emergency room within 30 days, and most importantly, in providing the care that the individual needs so they don't need to be readmitted to the hospital or to the emergency room, that they're moving on with their lives and their care and their recovery. The other piece that has worked amazingly and has been a significant challenge, as Dr. Mendoza had referenced, was access. Access to treatment continues to be a challenge. I think Jen Pinto will speak more to that in terms of how the outpatient program has really improved access, but that has been a very significant focus and lessons learned in this process. Collaboration has been a really focal point as well. A lot of the programs that we have developed and have now continued throughout this process have been that with a lot of our partners that are here in the room with us today, and specifically through Project Outreach or Plymouth County Outreach, and working with, starting with the Plymouth Police Department in providing follow-ups into the community following an opioid overdose, and has now to date spread to all 27 police departments within Plymouth County. So, countywide, the DA and other folks have been a strong supporter and helped us really facilitate that process. So, focusing a little bit more specifically on the emergency room, we've talked about the successes in embedding the specialists within the system. The other really key components have been working with other members of the systems, so the court, for example, in providing and delivering policies and procedures that really work and that are collaborative, and I know a lot of this really was kicked off with Judge Minahan in the process of developing relationships that are able to help facilitate that process effectively. And then we've also spent a lot of time reflecting on our work, our practices, the physicians in the emergency room have made very significant self-monitored changes in decreasing the amount of opiates that are being prescribed, and more importantly, I think, too, offering alternatives. So, it's not that we're not delivering care or lesser care, we're providing better care to individuals in the emergency room, as well as really, our team has really helped implement new policies and procedures around ensuring that people are getting the best care in terms of withdrawals, in terms of their comfort, in terms of, and I think that being able to do that, we're more apt to engage the individual and have them follow through into treatment as opposed to leaving against medical advice. And certainly those folks that do end up leaving against medical advice when it's an overdose, we have the now ability to go back out the next day with our partners into the community with a plainclothed officer, with Recovery Coaches, a lot of, again, the, our partners, our treatment providers that are here in the room with us now, Clean Slate, High Point, Golsnold, are all involved in this project and going back out and seeing them in the home, and it's really been a game changer. We now then in the home have access to their support system, and as we know, this addiction is a family disease, and everybody's going through it, and everybody needs support and treatment. We don't necessarily have access to support systems in the emergency room. We also are able to engage the individual who's using in the comfort of their home, they don't feel as pressured, they don't feel trapped, they've had a little more time to think about their, the overdose and what has occurred, and in the first year of doing this in Plymouth, the town of Plymouth, 85% of the folks that we saw in their homes were connected with treatment. So, these are folks that are left to the emergency room, declined treatment for a lot of reasons and wanted to leave. We were able to reconnect with them, 100% of the folks allowed us in the door and engaged with us, and 85% were connected from treatment, from that conversation in their home. And really importantly, again, getting the family members connected with support systems, getting them encouraged to come down, connected with Learn to Cope and other family systems, as well as down to our drop-in centers in order to get access to naloxone and information about how to use it, and that has been, I think, a significant game changer in the process of how we deliver care and how we've redefined our roles at a hospital in the community, as well as the police departments. And, you know, this last slide really depicts how we really view the system of care and ways in which we can continue to work to improve and strengthen it with the individual and family being in the center and wrapped around with all of our systems, including police and EMS, and the drug courts, and treatment providers, and medical care as well.
Just wanted to introduce you to Pedro Bunilla, but just to underscore the impact of Project Outreach, what is your success rates, Sarah, in terms of getting patients into programs with Project Outreach?
You know, we're working within the same system as everyone else, there's a lot of competition for beds, but with this relationship, we are able to usually expedite the process. And as I said, 85% in Plymouth, the town of Plymouth, has been connected with treatment. I think regional, it's around 70%, of the folks are connected with treatment from that visit. And that treatment could be what, it's really what they need, it's not always detox, it could be medicated assisted treatment, it could be returning to outpatient counseling, there's a lot of, a lot of options available, and we do what's best and what's needed in that moment.
Pedro Bunilla is the Director of the Physicians of Outpatient Psychiatry and also Emergency Psychiatry. Pedro.
Good morning. I joined Beth Israel Deaconess about three years ago, and I've been lucky to be a participant on this project through the CHART funding, which allowed us to look at the gaps in care in the community, and see what's not working and what could work better. We know that most of the care provided in the country for behavioral health happens in the primary care offices, and unfortunately, in the ER too, because we know how difficult it is to navigate the behavioral health system for many patients, so they resort to the ER, which is not an appropriate setting. So, we've been trying to implement strategies in both locations, in the ER, assist with people, trying to connect them with services, or if they are sick enough, at least to treat them while they're here before they go to the hospital. In the outpatient, primary care centers, we've been integrating and collaborating with different practices, with the idea of reducing stigma and improving access. From the feedback I get constantly from patients, it makes a huge difference when you receive your behavioral health care needs in a medical setting that is non-threatening and non-stigmatizing, and for, even for sick patients that may need a higher level of care, that's a good entry point when they've fallen in between the cracks, so that's been kind of the bulk of our work. So, helping patients access treatment quickly before they get sick, secondary prevention, helping them navigate the system. We've been providing short-term treatment, medication stabilization, short-term counseling, and a very important piece has been connecting the patients who need a higher level of care to the community, because that can be a difficult process because of the scarcity of resources and the complexities that come with these systems. That's been very rewarding for us, challenging, because it requires you to do a lot of leverage with trying to bring everybody to work together and share the ownership of the case. I think it really comes down to not just treating the episode of care that's in front of you, but rather looking at the whole person and the continuity of care. So, a lot of our work has been working kind of behind the curtains when the patient is gone, not the face-to-face interventions, but all the work that goes after the patient leaves the office. That has been, I think, key to the success of our model, and the kind of improving the transitions of care, and the collaboration with primary care doctors. Another important aspect of collaborating is, because there's only so much resources for behavioral health, we need the primary care practices and other specialties to get more comfortable treating these patients, and it's very challenging for them. So, working side-by-side is an ongoing education process for them, also for us to keep us more in tune with their medical side of their presentation, but it's an ongoing process where we can all help each other. If we can move to the next. Now, once we learned that that model works and make, work on making it more efficient, we realized that we're covering a gap in care in the community, but then we are faced with another gap, which is the financial gap, precisely for what I spoke about, the all the time that is invested in non-billable time, all the efforts when the patient is not in the office that you cannot get compensated for, but that is instrumental to the outcome. So, that has been what I've been trying to streamline, how can we get to a model where we provide enough care and enough coordination of care that we, that we are viable long-term? So, our efforts have been in that direction. Nationwide, this is obviously recognized, and there's been push to improve the compensation for these services, but it's still not enough. Just this year, there were new codes coming up for care coordination, when you manage populations through registries and panels, and there's some models that are trying to start to compensate for this, but not to the extent I think is necessary, so I think it's an area that we need more, more growth, and I'm certain it will come with time. As for plans for the future, as we move forward, besides being sustainable, we will hope that we expand this collaboration to not only primary care, but other practices where they struggle also with patients with complex behavioral health needs, and they don't have the time or resources for that. That could be from neurology to OB-GYN, GI, there's some specialties, neurology, that encounter complex behavioral health patients that we are looking forward to collaborate more in this same model. Then the next goal in mind will be to expand access Then the next goal in mind would be to expand access to medication-assisted treatment from all points of care, not just referring somebody to a clinic, but really facilitating warm handoffs and collaborating very closely, and even initiating treatment at all clinical locations, whether it is the ER, the medical floor, or whether it's a primary care office. I think to solve this problem with epidemic, we have very narrow windows of opportunity when we encounter these patients in the ER, in the office, and you have to seize the moment. So integrating comprehensive behavioral health services, I mean, sorry, substance abuse services with the behavioral health services in the medical settings is going to be key for success with this epidemic.
Thank you, Pedro. One of our challenges is and opportunities is we hear about population health management. And again, we have the South Shore as, as this is, this Petri dish, when you think about it, where we can, we can pull together evidence-based practices and see how we can intervene. We understand that our costliest, costlyest patients for the system are the ones with substance use, psychosocial issues, and behavioral health conditions, and those are the ones with the chronic medical illnesses that simply don't get better. Our challenge here is that we're transitioning from fee-for-service to capitation, which is essentially what we're trying to do, and that's the challenge, because no one is investing in what we're trying to do. That's a real issue. And despite the evidence pointing towards the success with such interventions, this is one of the gaps in terms of how to sustain the program. So with that in mind, I wanted to introduce Jen Pinto, who is the Manager of the ICI or the Integrated Care Initiative, and also serves as our seamless interface with a school system. Jen.
Jennifer, I'm being reminded that you need to pull the microphone close, just so that we're hearing that, just so they can make sure to pick everyone up. So everyone testifying to have the microphones up close, as I just did.
Got it. Just like that. Okay. Thank you, thank you so much for this opportunity this morning. As Dr. Mendoza mentioned, I'm the Manager of the Integrated Care Initiative for outpatient practices. I was hoping that if it would be okay, we could have our team stand, just to identify our, our crew.
Hey.
It's a wonderful crew, and I wanted them to have the opportunity to be, to be noticed. So my job here is to tell you a little bit more about the work that we are doing in this Integrated Care Initiative for the primary care practices. And one of that is to share more information about all of the components of the, of the work that we're doing. So one of the main, the main pieces we offer as part of integration would be the floor assessments, which, when you're integrated in a practice, you have an opportunity to be available for a provider that needs in the moment behavioral health support or consultation. And those warm handoffs give an opportunity to have patients come back and follow up for additional behavioral health services, if that is what's necessary. It's also an opportunity if a provider is seeing a patient in a medical practice for a medical appointment, and we learn there is a safety concern or an issue for more, for a need for more immediate behavioral health resources, having us on site and available provides an opportunity for us to do a safety evaluation, determine best next steps on the spot. We do a lot of chart review and case consultation, which basically means that we're not necessarily seeing a patient and providing a billable service, but a primary care provider is referring a patient to us and asking for us, most, most commonly the psychiatric team, to review the chart and make recommendations back to the primary care physician around management of psychotropic medications. Curbside consultation, there's a lot of that that happens in an integrated behavioral health partnership. We do a lot of conversations with the primary care providers that have a patient in the room and walk down and want to ask us what the best next course of action is, which of course isn't necessarily going to result in a referral necessarily, but they're looking for more expert opinion on behavioral health resources or recommendations. We do short-term counseling as part of our brief model, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in an upcoming slide, as well as short-term medication management. We've been providing recovery groups, we've been partnering with Clean Slate over the past two years to embed a behavioral health clinician at their site and provide recovery groups. We provide linkage to community resources. I think that's probably one of, one of the pieces that we're doing the most often, and we spend an enormous amount of time making very careful decisions about what is the best, what is in the best interest of the patient's behavioral health needs, similar to interface, making sure that we're partnering patients appropriately so that that is a sustainable relationship. And of course, there's also opportunities for long-term co-management when a patient is referred by a primary care provider or specialist and is seen by our psychiatric team for medication review and med stabilization. That patient is then referred back to the primary care to have ongoing med management, then we remain available as an ongoing support to that process in the event that questions arise or patients need to be reevaluated. So, I think we got this right? So these next slides are probably maybe more of the important slides. This is our actual referral data that we've been collecting over the course of two years. Every time a patient is referred to us, we have created a document that notes the reason for the referral. So this is actual language that's coming from the primary care physician to our practice. And this is an overview over the past two years of every single reason for a referral that we've had for patients ages two to twenty-five. I thought it'd be helpful if we separated it, pediatric patients versus adult patients. So these are the issues that, that primary care physicians, pediatric physicians were hearing that were resulting in a referral to our program. The larger the word, the larger the font is meaning there are more referrals in that area. So I think it's noteworthy to identify grief as, grief as the single most, just the highest reason for referral. Attentional issues, anger, anxiety, behavioral issues, school issues, depression. So this is what our kids in our community are, are dealing with, and this is the reasons why they're, they're being referred to us. All of these patients, all of these reasons for these referrals, the patients are contacted within two business days, which I think is an enormous service. And unlike a lot of other community-based agencies where, for whatever reason, they don't always necessarily have the resources to provide such a quick response, we think it's very important to catch patients in the moment and we respond immediately to the need. We also circle back around with the primary care physician to follow up and let the PCP know whether or not that patient has engaged in treatment, which is not always something that's happening or able to happen if there isn't an integrated relationship. This is our, these are our statistics for patients ages twenty-six and up, and similar to, to the pediatric piece, the words that are in larger font are the ones that we are receiving more of. And to highlight those would be mood, substance use issues, anxiety, panic, attentional issues, stress. These are all reasons for referrals for the adult population. Again, two business days for a response to these, to address these needs, and if a referral comes through for the pediatric or the adult population that's urgent, the response is same business day, and it's evaluated by a licensed clinician. So in terms of treatment, I thought it'd be helpful for you to have an idea of the patients that have been served. So looking at the past two years of our program, we've received close to three thousand referrals to our program. And about thirty percent of those referrals were pediatric referrals, and our, the pediatric portion of our program was not running as long as the adult portion of our program, so I would suspect that number would be a lot higher. Episodes of care, we have approximately one thousand episodes of care per year, and that's episodes of care in our program. So that could be someone seeing both a psychiatrist as well as a psychotherapist. That would be considered one episode of care. Our treatment includes the following, so we offer very brief episodes of treatment, which would be one to two visits, where patients are really requiring consultation and needing to be connected with higher level of care, or they're needing to be connected with long-term community resources from the start, and we're offering that support. Or they're patients that have left an inpatient treatment facility and have to wait to be seen at a community-based practice and are looking for medication bridging in the interim, which we do see a lot of. The average episode of treatment is between three to seven visits, where a patient most commonly would be engaged in brief psychotherapy and also have a medication evaluation and med management and stabilization, and that information would be delivered and returned back to the primary care physician. And extensions and brief treatment usually are between ten to twelve episodes, and that a lot of times would happen if a patient is in the process of being transferred to a long-term facility and, for whatever reason, is not able to get an appointment in good time, and we might carry those patients a little bit longer to make sure there's no interruption in their care or treatment. We use the Patient Health Questionnaire nine at intake and discharge with every patient and with all, with all collected PH29 scores and an evaluation of our results, there was a fifty percent reduction in depression screening scores. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Just to give you a snapshot, we identified the costs of the programs that Jen was referring to, these integrated care models that were embedded in four primary care practices, one of them being pediatric and family practice, and we've presented the cost that was not managed by reimbursement. It, it wasn't enormous, but out of those four practices, only one is interested in continuing the program. Say that again. Only one of the four practices that we embedded our behavioral health group in was invested in continuing the integra, integrated care program. They didn't want to invest any money to support this, because we had identified that we had a certain delta that was not going to be covered by reimbursement, but only one out of four.
Can I ask? Do you mind?
Absolutely.
For practice?
It's, it's fifty thousand dollars for the social worker and, and probably another sixty thousand to seventy thousand for the nurse practitioner. And that does not even include the time that Dr. Bonilla, as the Director, manages everything. So that's tragic when you think about it, because all, all this data that proves that evidence practices of embedding behavioral health clinicians works is being thrown away. And again, these are the same practices that eventually will be essentially responsible for managing the cost of their population.
Mr. Terry, do you mind if I ask you another question?
What I think, what I'd like, no, 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 please, what I'd like to do is finish all the testimony, then we'll, then we'll do, then we'll do the wall. No, me too, I was making some notes, but why don't we finish everyone's testimony, then we'll, then we'll do questions from all the commissioners.
So if I can move on to the next slide very quickly, so for the behavioral health treatment, we've had three thousand individuals who received ED behavioral health intervention, a thousand individuals in the primary care offices. There were two hundred and forty non-fatal overdoses in Plymouth. Ninety-one received community follow-up, sixty-five received assessment, fifty-eight received outpatient treatment. There were ten drop-in community centers that were created for outpatient treatment options, Narcan kits and training, and additional support services, and there was a forty-eight percent decrease in the prescription of opioids by hospital ED physicians. So let me segue into the next part of our conversation. I was trying to supplement my Boston Globe-based medical knowledge by reading the New York Times in twenty sixteen, and I read about this Dr. Patricia Conrod, who is a psychiatry professor based out of Montreal, who came up with a prevention program. Targeted population was ages thirteen to fifteen, which immediately caught my eye, because we were trained as addiction psychiatrists to think about potential ways to intervene before the age of fourteen, because if, the data has shown that if you intervene before the kids, the kids become fourteen, there's a chance that you not only decrease the use or misuse of substances, you have a chance of allowing adolescent to allow his or her brain to develop without any further stress. This is the second stage where you have myelination of the big white matter tracts leading to the frontal lobe. And as anyone who's had a teenager knows, they think they know everything, but they don't. Critical thinking is not part of the package. So imagine adding drugs to that picture. You're not only impede their growth cognitively, but you also impede their growth socially. So this prevention program looked at four personality dimensions, and what was interesting is that there were eight randomized trials in Britain, Australia, Netherlands, and Canada with profound reductions in binge drinking, frequent drug use, and alcohol-related problems. What's also interesting is that this was on the SAMSA website, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration website. What's even more interesting is no one in the US has ever used it. So we'd reach out to Gary, and I'd like to turn the mic over to Gary and Superintendent.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to talk regarding this topic and, and prevention. And that's, that's what I'm here for, and I hope that's what my mission is as we move forward with this partnership. And I do say partnership because this is a partnership with Beth Israel Deaconess Plymouth, and it's been, it's made possible through donation by Beth Israel. So we are very fortunate to have this relationship that goes back many years, very fortunate that Dr. Mendoza and his team reached out to the school department to, to engage in this discussion regarding this program. And the program is really based on a model of working with students to create a sense of, understanding of personality type, and how that personality type really can lead to understanding themselves better, to allow them to make better decisions once they understand themselves in a different way. So let me just walk through the program a little bit. The, the program is really, it starts off with an opportunity for our students here in eighth grade. Our, our students in eighth grade in the next three weeks will engage in a twenty-three question inventory, and that's the substance abuse, substance risk profile, which is the SERPs inventory. We took the opportunity to actually take a paper-driven inventory and convert it to electronic inventory, which will make it very simple for us. Takes about five minutes for the students to engage. Students will go into a computer lab or a portable computer lab and take a five-minute survey. The inventory focuses on four dimensions of personality risk, and I think that's really important to understand themselves a little bit better. And those four personality areas are anxiety sensitivity, hopelessness, impulsivity, and sensation-seeking. So once the survey is complete, we will work with about forty percent, this, this slide says twenty percent, but we're going to work with about forty percent of our students that are in those four categories. So the way it works is once the survey is, is complete, we run the data, and students will, will be broken off into four different categories based on trait, and they will, will work with kids that are in the high areas within those traits. So what happens at that point is students will be working with a trained individual. We, we've trained fourteen people in Plymouth who actually have the ability to We, we've trained fourteen people in Plymouth who actually have the ability to run through the prevention training program. And again, it works with the impulsivity, which is common in kids with ADHD, hopelessness precursative to depression, and anxiety, anxiety sensitivity, which is really linked to panic, panic disorder and sensation-seeking. People drawn to intense experiences will most likely use drugs. So once they're in those different groups, we'll have, one of our trained people will actually work with kids. We have a facilitator and a co-facilitator. Small groups, eight to ten, maybe twelve students, they will be pulled out of, of class. Again, this is all with parent, parent permission. Okay? So parents will have a passive consent to take the survey, active consent to engage in, in the training. So we have fourteen staff members, will work about forty percent of the population, two ninety-minute sessions. First ninety-minute session, it'll be with smaller groups, second ninety-minute session, smaller group, no more than two to three weeks apart. The goal is, here in Plymouth, is to be able to do this with our, our students. And we will cover, again, it's a large population in Plymouth, but we'll work about forty percent of, of the students. And it really is based on schedule and availability of, of students' time, and also our, our trained people that will actually go into classes and actually run these groups. Like I mentioned, there's parent permission. And one of the greatest things that we have realized through the research is, this training actually stays with students for, the research indicates, for three years, which is really important as we grow through adolescence and that decision-making and that brain development. So what it essentially does, and I know, you know, a lot of the research indicates and, and the data indicates, that this is for the reduction of alcohol consumption, delayed initiation of alcohol use and binge drinking, you know, the likelihood of initiating, initiating illicit drugs. But it, it helps students to discern and make good decisions, to run through a process in their mind when they are faced with a situation that they actually have some tools to actually help to make a good decision. I tell parents, I've told people when we've been working with this program and, and parent conversations, that it's really giving kids tools that they didn't have before. We have a lot of students that have the ability to make some good decisions based on maturity, based on life experience, but we have a lot of students, as the research indicates, that need some level of support. And this program actually helps them to gain that support. You know, I think we've done a lot of work over time where we've had guest speakers come to town, and they really, they crack open that, that discussion. This, this program actually takes that discussion and gives them tools to, to, to move forward with. So we are extremely excited about the opportunity to be working on a program like this. We have, like I mentioned before, fourteen trained staff in our community, those are staff in Plymouth. We have about thirteen hundred staff in the Plymouth Public Schools. We have fourteen trained staff that were trained over the summer. They are either school nurses, or they are school psychologists, or school counselor therapists that work within our schools. So they've had a significant training with Dr. Conrod. She came to town, she spent some time with, with our staff, and, and they were able to train them. She will be here November eighth at the sixteen-twenty Hotel for a guest speaking opportunity, if anyone would like to hear more about her research phenomenon. It's unbelievable. This, this research is, since nineteen, in the nineteen nineties, and, and the development of this program goes way back. We are the first school district to, to look at implementing this. And I can tell you, there's, I kind of figured out why, because there's a lot of work to make this happen. It takes partnership, it takes a community that wants to dive into this, and it also takes a partnership with a group like Beth Israel Plymouth to really make this happen. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Dr. Maitis, thank you very much, because I went to that for a session that you had, and it was, one, it's a good reflection, incredible reflection of the partnership that you have in Plymouth with the schools, Beth Israel, Israel Deaconess. I know the police chief is here, the DA is here, and the courts represented. So it's a logical first place to start, and it was fascinating for the presentation. When we get into questions, one of the things, for our commission, we're looking at as much evidence-based work, so you are the test case for us.
Yes.
And we look forward to seeing how, how that develops here in Plymouth.
And we're anxious to come back to you and give you more information on, on how things go with our, with our, with our work.
Thank you.
As we finish the contact experts' testimonies, we have one more testimony, which we feel might give us some more compelling and maybe some visceral impact on what we've been trying to address with you.
Let me introduce Simus. He's been working in, he's been under our care in the clinic, and he's kind of, can illustrate very well the, our mission. At the integrated care project, it was not to substitute the mental health provided in the community, rather to complement it. And I think that his case can illustrate a bit, and his experience can illustrate a bit our mission and work.
Hi, I'm Seamus Hastings. I'm a patient of, of Dr. Bonilla's. So when, when, when Jen called me and asked me to, if I would be available to, to speak to you all, I immediately jumped on it, as much as I hate doing this. One of, one of my, one of my things is, is anxiety, and so I'm, I'm sitting here dying in my own skin as, as I listen to everyone. But as, as I said to Jen on the phone, the two people on my right and left here, they saved my life. The program just, it allowed me to focus on getting better. It allowed me to focus on what I needed to do in order to get my life back in order. You know, Dr. Bonilla, Bonilla was talking to my primary care. They were working together on a plan when I needed to go and get some treatment at Pembroke Hospital. They were talking to those folks, even while I was staying there, they were communicating back and forth. They put me in touch with a, a counselor that was in the program, that unfortunately I just learned this morning, they had to, they had to reduce because funding was gone, and she's phenomenal. It's just, it's, I don't know, I can guarantee you, I most certainly would, would not be here if it wasn't for the program. I can, you know, and I, I think my, my, my wife and, and two kids would say the same thing. Without, without the, the help of the program, without the, the communication between all the different components of it, and there's a lot, I, I don't, you know, I, I see, obviously I get the bills, so I, I see all the different people that are involved, and, and even just from, you know, the staff back there, just from checking in, it just kind of, it allows you to take this deep breath and just say, ah, all right, you know, I, I feel good, I, I know I'm gonna, I'm gonna get what I need, and I can focus on that. And I've been through a bunch of programs, so I, I can, I can relate to different ones. This is it. I mean, this, they're on to something here, I don't know what it is, but if, if there's the possibility to invest anything, this, this is where you should be focused on. Because it, again, it's, it's life-changing, it's life-altering. So, thank you.
Okay. Doctor, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank Seamus for your courage and candor.
So I think we'll open it now to commissioners, just for questions for the entire panel. And I think we'd, we'd start, one, doctor, actually, I, I cut you off before, so I want to show you.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just curious if embedded in the primary care, I'm very curious about that model in the sense that we actually represent specialty providers, but there's so much talk about eboarding and, you know, people on the inpatient side. I just wanted to see if you could talk a little bit about how you feel like that. Being able to treat people in the primary care setting, I would imagine, is not a specialty care, but I'd like to hear that. Not everyone, I mean, there's a population that doesn't need specialty care, but if you're getting to that prevention model, I think that's kind of, that's clearly what we're focused on, so I would just be curious about that.
That goes to the point where I mentioned that we feel like complementary to the other services in the community. With primary care being kind of the entry point for behavioral health needs, if you have a problem with anxiety, depression, the first person you go to is your primary care doctor, hopefully not the ER. And then getting into formal treatment, because of the limited resources, it can be too delayed, because systems are trying to serve a very large population that has long-term care needs. So being there available for quick access with the hopes that we can stabilize that person and possibly educate the primary care doctor into getting the patient back and continuing that care, we can take care of a large sector of the population and save the specialty long-term resources for people who need that kind of higher level of care. So in a way, it's kind of trying to triage the care, assist the primary care doctors, and optimize the resources in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Okay. So first of all, I want to thank Seamus for your honesty and your willingness to come forward, because every time someone does that, and you take that step, it empowers others who are in the shadows, and it gives them an opportunity to be honest, even if it's being honest with their own primary care physician and look for help. So thank you for your courage to come forward, because it's really helpful to so many others that you probably don't even know you're helping. So that was wonderful, I want to say that. First of all, I do want to just say it's great to come back, because you see all of the partners in this community that we began many years ago, sort of these conversations, and then all of a sudden, everybody had everybody's cell phone. And I was talking to Chief Potery on the phone, courtroom, and, you know, Ed Bradley, and he was really Superintendent Maitis. I mean, it's really been an amazing, and Plymouth is a, is a place where things are happening. So thank you, all of you. I know there's great, DA Cruz has really, you know, we didn't get the mental health court off the ground without the district attorney's support, or the drug court. The police have been absolutely helped, fabulous, so has the fire, I just can't say enough. And I want to also thank the legislative community, because people like Rep. Cantwell have made such a difference in this community. So thank you to everyone. I just want to say it's good to be back for, at least today. I just want to ask a question on the, first of all, the integrated behavioral health model, we went listening to a lot of testimony over the last many months, and that whole idea of getting in, this is an early intervention, this is promote, prevent, trying to get upstream. And the courts are pretty far downstream, so we're trying to get them before they ever get to us. But the, the question I have is on specifically, and this is for the hospital and also for the schools, is how far down do you drill, sort of, for that integrated model on trauma, stigma, and early intervention mental health screening? So if someone comes, we know this, we know that when the nine-year-old is watching Grammy get revived with Narcan in the living room, that that child goes to school the next day, and it's really hard for that child to focus. So I know we treat, we treat the person that comes to the ED, and my question specifically is to both the hospital, and only, I don't know who it is that's going to answer, do you drill into the family so that, because we know that as that trauma happens, it sows the seeds for further behavioral problems down the road. So all of a sudden, the nine-year-old, who everybody's so busy with the emergency, the acuity of what's going on with, with Grammy right now, all of a sudden, you know, it's, it's four or five years before the nine-year-old's trauma is manifested in behavioral health, whether it's substance or mental health, both. So that's my question is, and the other piece is, the drilling down into the whole family, which is what I'm sort of trying to get at here, does it also include things like safe practices for medication storage? Maybe it's already on the bottle, I don't know, but I mean, I really think that a lot of this stuff happens in the, in the medication cabinet, in the house. People don't even realize that these kids are going in and they're using them. So that, if that's not too long-winded a question, I think we'll start with the hospital and, and Superintendent Maitis. Anyone want to talk about that? Do you bleed into sort of the other pieces of the family that are, that are being traumatized?
I think that because we are a brief program, the, the work that we're doing is incredibly rich, and it really is looking at the whole picture and trying to understand all of the needs. So what we're able to do, especially if there was a case where there was a child that survived trauma or child witness to violence, we're, we're able to identify, to look at the whole picture and identify all of the supports or resources a family needs. So we're kind of that intermediary spot. So we do that brief consultation. We tell the family quite often, for, for getting a, a three-year-old referred to our program, we're, we're essentially meeting with the parents. And what we're saying is, these are the things that need to happen now. And I think that the, the circle back to the PCP is so critical, because when we make those recommendations, those recommendations and, and what we're sharing needs to take place for a family is going back to the behavioral health, who is continuously seeing those, that family. So they can say, my understanding is that you were, you know, you know, that you were advised to engage in your own individual counseling, or you do some family work, whatever happened with that. So it, it, it does hold accountable, absolutely.
That's great.
I think one of the things that we're very fortunate in is having a collaboration with the police department. And for us, we started this model about three years ago, where anytime there is a traumatic incident at a home, we get a phone call from the police department. The police department will then reach out to my office, we reach out to the school directly. In some cases, the police department will reach out directly to the school, to just give the school a heads-up to council, as a heads-up that something traumatic happened at home. A few years ago, actually, two years ago, we had thirteen overdose deaths in one school. So I think that model is really important, to be able to be aware of all of the tendencies of, of, you know, what kids might be dealing with in school. So that model is, is really helpful. My assistant superintendent receives an email anytime there's a drug overdose in Plymouth, and what he does is, he will scour our databases to make sure that there's a connection, if there's a connection with a family member, that we know about it, and we get that information to the school. So that proactive understanding of who the population is and how we can deal with it is pretty important. We, we do have one of our principals here today that does a lot of, a great deal of work around the traumatized child. I, I do believe she may be speaking later, and you can get some direct reflection from, from her as to how that transpires into the school day, which is a significant growing issue for the schools, because our, our students are experiencing a, a great deal of, of trauma. Keep in mind, four years ago, I was at one of our elementary schools where the police department was giving a citation to a first grader and a kindergarten, because kindergarten, because they called nine-one-one because their grandmother was overdosing. So, you know, they are experiencing it, and it's not, it's, it hasn't gotten any better.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will be hearing from Chief Potery just in a moment after the district attorney. Just a couple other questions, and then I want to make sure, timing-wise, that, for people's schedules, that we're able to call this. We're going to go, actually, first, Margaret, and then.
Thank you. So I believe in this kind of work, it's a system of care kind of work, and I know that that is what works. What I'm very disappointed to hear is that you had four primary care practices, and only one is agreeing to continue. So can you tell us a little bit more about, I heard funding, yet tell us more about what the educational component could be to mitigate that issue of funding, which appears to be what you determined is the main issue, why it wasn't picked up by all four? And in terms past education, what else do you think might help break down that barrier so that we could have more of a seamless approach?
I think that's a really great question, and I just wanted to clarify that all four practices came to the table and wanted, and engaged in lengthy discussions with us about how to continue, that it was invaluable, and that they can't imagine doing their work without it. It really came down to the bottom line of, of funding and dollar amounts.
I hear that. I, I'm, my question is about what would help, because we do have data that they get that back if, over a period of time. So I'm, I'm thinking about what the solution-seeking component of that, so that they would be more willing to buy in and take the first risk step. I know it's a hard question, so I'm not surprised there's not an answer. Don't feel pressured. I, I guess we all need to put our heads together and find that answer, if there's, if there really isn't an answer.
Yeah, that's a million-dollar question.
Pardon me?
I would be scratching our heads for months now.
Okay.
In trying to make our services more efficient.
Yep.
As, as efficient as possible to diminish the burden on other. burden on other systems as for the need for fund. But I think, I mean, I would envision that the solution, since there's a gap in finances and the benefits of the community as a whole, that it could be a shared effort between institutions, healthcare government, and other kind of larger picture, other people that can benefit from improving the health of the community.
Sure.
Could that be a joint effort? That would be my idea.
But we have to find how to quantify that because one of the things we're finding from this commission, we had a fascinating subcommittee meeting just talking about how we're paying, that there are some intransigent issues that, you all know, at least Jen knows of the pay-for-success model, what we, in our society, we're saying, well, we have homelessness, we're trying to reduce recidivism, we have people trying to learn how to read for the first, so things that the government can't fund right now. And one thing we're exploring is some private funders who are looking at models saying, well, we will get paid back. If we give you in the state, if we fund a program called ROKA that's reducing children from getting rearrested and going back to jail, how do we get paid back? So I'm interested, one, from having, there are other members like Vinnie DiMascio, who was here before, by the way, a state senator, got called into a session. Vinnie, the good news for Vinnie is that he's on Ways and Means. The bad news for Vinnie is he's on Ways and Means. So we need, from you all, when you're being able, we need the evidence that you have of saying, this is where we save money. If we are out and we do the integrated care model, and we know that this is saving later on in the emergency room, but how do we make sure that the hospital gets paid for doing those services? How do we make sure that the folks who are providing the care can get compensated as well? We'd be very interested in your feedback from those, and this discussion will continue. I do want to note, if you did not get to cover things, I'm going to have you email to us some follow-up thoughts. I'm going to do just a couple more questions and then we're going to move along for the next folks' testimony. So a couple more questions? Phil, you had one?
Hi. Thanks very much for your presentations, really appreciate the work that you're doing and your obvious dedication. I, if I have concerns, they're at the point of referral. You know, we, our organization has done a lot of work around granularizing, for example, mental health and physical health care records out of concern about the impact of trauma on the primary care provider and the potential for compromising care. At the school level, we tend to favor whole-school approaches rather than those that identify at-risk children because we find that they're more productive, trauma-sensitive learning for all, for example, is something that, you know, is beneficial at the whole school level. So I'm wondering how, you know, how you, if you factor those concerns in the way you've structured the program and, you know, what you might do to mitigate those issues.
Are you referencing both prevention and the integrated care initiative, or were you speaking one rather than the other?
Well, it's the integration at the primary care level. You know, our sense is that, you know, sometimes it's better off for a primary care provider not to know about a psychiatric history because it influences care in a way that isn't positive. And at the school level, you know, we find that when kids are identified, you know, a tendency to, you know, focus attention on them that sometimes might result in their exclusion is a...
And actually, I can help answer, because we definitely have a dichotomy of opinion on the commissioners, because one, a number of us would say, with the model that you have, when you have resources, it does make sense to spend money for general information for all students to help give them ways to be able to prevent early use of drugs or the like. But it absolutely makes sense if we have children who are showing that they have at-risk issues, we absolutely want to be directing money to where it's most effective. A little bit of a difference in opinion at times, so it's not, it's not picking on kids, but once we have something that you do with prevention, when we know that these kids are at risk, or if you're a primary care physician, you should know some of the psychiatric histories so that you can be most effective. It is, it's a difficult issue that we're going to grapple with about, you know, confidentiality and certainly other things of not having children who are being identified just as the problem kids. But it certainly is something that the commission needs to grapple with. But your points are well taken, Phil. And I would think, just a couple of quick answers to that, and then we're going to move on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for getting people care that they need, don't get me wrong. But there, you know, are ways, for example, teaming people with lived experience, you know, at the primary care level has been quite effective, you know, in reducing the negative effects of stigma. I'm wondering if that's the kind of thing you factored and if you take steps in that kind of direction.
I'll talk about the school piece, which is probably the easier one. But I think that...
Give me some time.
It's a sheer numbers issue for us, I think, and also there's two issues with it. One, it's sheer numbers and quality of delivery of program. The delivery of program has to be as streamlined as possible based on how the research is presented. So we're very concerned that we have, we're calling this a pilot year for us, so we're going to integrate it and we're going to offer it. I think the issue that we have is we have parents that say, well, what if my kid doesn't qualify? I want them to qualify. And that is a risk that we've had to take. But we believe that, you know, the training is extremely intensive for the trainers that are involved. For us to get a model in place for the quantity of students in Plymouth, eighth grade is almost 600. For us to train 600 kids in the time period of a year for us would be extremely difficult. So the research indicates that if we can focus on the 40% numbers that we indicated, that we will make a significant progress. Personally, I would like to have the opportunity to work with all our kids, but this is the model that we've decided to move forward with.
Dr. Conrad does note, I think it'd be very helpful to listen to her presentation as well, she speaks about the secondary effect on the students that did not participate in the intervention, and that there is a profound impact on the community at large, not just the students that were directly affected.
Thank you.
So just to quickly address your issue about stigma and primary care. So there is a shortage of behavioral health specialists to begin with, and a shortage of primary care physicians. And what we're trying to do is not take over the behavioral health care. In fact, what we're doing, a lot of what we're doing, which is not reimbursed, is trying to educate the primary care physicians to not only recognize the problem, but how to intervene and eventually take over the care of the patient. The other thing is that decreases the stigma right away because the patient and the family are not sent to a separate corridor, it's in the same treatment facility. Number three, that leads to compartmentalization of care. Oh, I don't deal with that. And what we found is these patients that have compartmentalization of care are the ones that are most at the risk for drug overdoses, drug interactions, because nobody knows what the other is doing, and eventually wind up to be your complex care patient, which will be in the ED every two days.
That's fascinating, thank you. I want to thank you very much for your testimony. This will be a continuing discussion, one for Senator DiMascio, who had to leave, he's going to have to watch the video, so he will then write questions back to you, that's part of the homework. But there will be, I took 10 pages of notes, and there are things that we wanted to do for follow-up. So thank you, one, for coming, appreciate the continuing conversation from commissioners and between the hospital and with our commission. But with that, I want to say thanks, and we'll be moving on to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. For our next panel, I want to call up together will be the district attorney, Tim Cruz, and we have our police chief, Michael Pottery. I think Judge Minahan already really covered your testimony with her statement, so I think...
Representative Cantwell, the head chief, Alan from East Bridgewater.
Oh, please, Alan, I'm sorry, good, thanks. I know you were the team that created the program, so yes. Along with our terrific chief from Marshville, Phil Taviras, of course.
Phil's not here today. It's always good to mention.
Please.
I will...
Please, you could have the microphone just so that...
And I want to thank you, Representative Cantwell.
And you just have to hit the button, Tim, I'm sorry, pardon.
I learned after a while, Mike, thank you. I want to thank you, Representative Cantwell, and Judge Minahan, and the higher commission for listening to us a little bit today. And I certainly don't want to step on the toes of my police chiefs that are with me here today who have done such a great job, so I'm not going to talk a lot about outreach and Plymouth County Hope and the programs that they've developed, they're really important programs. But I just want to say briefly and at the outset, you know, as, I've been now the district attorney now for the better part of 16 years. And when I was in the DA's office, and I started 30-some-odd years ago with Judge Minahan was in the office, I think she was five at the time, it was a long time ago, but it was a different world back then, of which there really was no world of prevention. And there, all we really ever knew was get a police report, we try to figure out what happened in the case and what could we do to try to keep people safe. And it was a different world. 16 years back, I became district attorney, and I walked into my office, my new office, and I sat down with a guy who I knew, I'd known for a long time, and a lot of people here know him, and he's not a lawyer. And I said, well, his name's Eddie Jacobs, I said, Eddie, you're a great guy and everything, but what do you do here in the DA's office? You're not a lawyer, you're not an advocate, I don't know what you're doing. And he goes, well, I'm the director of preventative resources. And I said, that's quite a title. I said, but what do you do? And for the next hour and a half, he told me of the programs and the things that we were involved in to try to get in front of the problems that occur within our county. And it was really, it was really drinking from a fire hydrant. There was just so much information of things that we never did before. And it's so incredibly important now, I think, and we're looking with, you know, with Chief Allen from East Bridgewater and Chief Pottery from Plymouth, and the traditional role of law enforcement, I think we can all agree, has changed. And now it's on a more proactive preventative aspect, and especially now as a result of the opioid crisis and the issues that we're dealing with right now. And I listened to some of the numbers that the staff from the hospital was talking about, and I can tell you, as I sit here right now, here in Plymouth County, we've had 113 fatal overdoses in 2017, very comparable to our numbers last year at this time, a little bit below. What we did learn over a period of time, however, was that we weren't getting all the numbers. All the unattended deaths that occur here in our county are going to be responded by the local police, and as soon as there is a death, they will reach out to the state police assigned to my office. We were getting those numbers. But what we weren't getting are the numbers of individuals who are being brought to hospitals, and perhaps they've been revived, but, you know, be a Narcan. And then if they did unfortunately pass at a hospital, we wouldn't get those numbers because now those were attended deaths. So our numbers really weren't accurate. So myself and Sheriff McDonald, a year and a half back, two years back now, we knew the problem that we were facing, what we had to deal with. So we developed the Plymouth County Drug Abuse Task Force. And really what it is, is trying to get a piece of sectors from around our community here in Plymouth County, and I think as you've seen, or if you've gotten a taste here in our county, we have a great working relationship amongst hospitals, amongst legislators, amongst police, judiciary, faith-based, parents. That is what our task force turned into, and what we're trying to do, and a lot of people in this room, you know, I sit here and I see Hillary from Brockton and Emery Galvin from Situette, and Jim's wife, Jen, of Marshfield Facts, all these different people that are doing work above and beyond the call to try to get in front of this problem. And our task force strategy is relatively simple. We try to enhance the capacity of our county to address substance misuse. We're trying to reduce the demand through education and prevention. We're trying to reduce the supply by the enforcement of the laws against the traffickers and the dealers of this poison on the streets, and to augment and increase access to existing treatment and recovery services. Like I said, things that are not traditional law enforcement. Judge Minahan started the first drug court here in our county, and it was mental health, and it was really very broad-based, and as she stated, she reached out and talked to virtually everybody here and had them on speed dial, from the bench, I might add, sometimes, right? Yeah, I know, I saw you. And it was just incredible how people were working together, and really, like I said, in a non-traditional way. And I'm not going to get into Plymouth County outreach or Plymouth County Hope, I'm going to let the chiefs talk about that. But it really is something that, the information that we're trying to get to find out the problems and what resources exist for us to continue to do this sort of job, has really been remarkable. We've developed a database through the Drug Abuse Task Force where we're getting real-time information that the police chiefs now, and I think we're the only county in Massachusetts, and I don't know of any other counties anywhere else, all 27 communities talk to each other every day regarding overdoses. We know that if an overdose occurs in the urban community of Brockton, that person may not be from Brockton. As a matter of fact, probably less than 50% are from Brockton. So they will reach out to the local police departments in our county, and they will go out and start outreach. And we're seeing a lot of great information going back and forth, and I certainly don't want to speak for the chiefs, but I think what they're doing has just been incredible. The other thing I just want to talk about briefly, when we talk about some of the issues, and Dr. Maitis brought it up, was talking about Dr. Conrad and the, Conrad and the program that's coming up next week, November 8th, at 1620. It's been put on by the Drug Abuse Task Force, by the DA's office, the sheriff, and we're bringing in people, we have Judge John Spinalli from, who's the head of juvenile courts in Bristol, and he'll talk about how their numbers in juvenile court have skyrocketed as a result of the problems of the grandparents who are taking over for the people, the people who are either losing their lives or are inpatient themselves and they can't take care of their kids, another whole problem. Back about 10 years ago, we had a situation in Brockton, and what had happened was a young boy saw his mother's boyfriend get arrested the night before, and one of the things he was arrested for was that he had a gun. And that young boy went to school the next day. And there was no program in place to talk to schools, and there are privileges and confidentiality's and other issues. But what happened that day, and what brought it to our attention, was when Johnny went to school the next day, he obviously told his friends, and it's like that game of telephone tag, you know? He told his friend that his mother's boyfriend got arrested with a gun, by the end of the day, the story was he had a gun in his locker. So the police had to show up and find out what was going on. So what we, it was brought to us at that point, and what we've tried to do is continue to work with a lot of the different programs, the Harvard Learning Center, trying to make sure we could go out and talk to people about how do we deal with kids who are watching violent crime, that's how it started, violent crime, domestic violence, child abuse cases, because these kids were showing up in school the next day and they were acting out, and nobody knew why. And you couldn't tell them what happened. So how do you get around that? And how do you try to make sure that you can talk to the schools? Myself and the same gentleman, Eddie Jacobs, went around, we talked at various places around the country, we talked down in West Virginia. West Virginia, down there, did a tremendous job in taking what we did in developing their own program. And actually, the woman that runs that program came and spoke at Bridgewater State a few months back, and they call their program Handle With Care. It's very similar to what Plymouth does right now. You don't tell what happens. Something bad happens, the police know about it, they call the schools or the appropriate person in that channel and say, listen, something happened last night with John Cruz, handle him with care. That's all you need to know. You don't need to know the other stuff, you can cut away from all the problems with the confidentiality and things such as that. So what that program next week is going to show is really dealing is the role, because now we've expanded to the opioid problem. That's what that is next week, domestic violence, child abuse, and now the kids who are being, having problems with this opioid problem, either through the loss of parents or either through from the situation with their grandparents there, and they're having a difficult time taking care of their kids, their grandkids. And what they're talking about are ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, that as I'm sure many of you people know and you're familiar with, the connection between the ACEs and the heightened risk for substance misuse, that causal connection between, if that child has more than one ACE at that point, whether it be homelessness, whether it be violence in the home, the more ACEs they have, the more direction they're going to be going to whether or not they're going to commit to risky abuse, including substance abuse. So that is what, you know, trying to get in front of some of the problems that we're seeing on a bigger picture. There's no one group here that's going to solve these problems here today. There's no, it's not the DA's office, it's not the police, it's not the hospitals, it's not the legislators, it's not the judges. It is everybody sitting in a room like this that is talking about these issues and has agreed to work together. And that's why I'm so proud of the people that work here in our county. Each and every one of you should be commended for the work that you're doing. You are making a difference in kids' lives whether you know it or not. And we try to espouse this as best as we can to try to make sure we can stop kids from ending up in the criminal justice system. That's my role here. I don't want to see these kids in our system anymore. And I think that by continuing to work with this, we're going to be in a better position to make sure that we can help them. I don't profess to have all the answers, I am not a doctor, and I don't pretend to be one on TV either, you know? But I do know that we work well together and that we're going to continue to do that. So if anybody wants to go to our program next week, please contact the district attorney's office, Dr. Conrad is going to be, it's free, it's at the 1620, the old Radisson, right down the street from here.
And the DA's going to feed us all.
I think we are feeding you all. I don't know if it's good, but we're going to feed you something. And make sure that, you know, that we can learn a little bit more so we can continue to work and try to keep kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. District Attorney. Chief?
Did you get the three-minute email? Because I did. I'm not sure I can do anything in three minutes, but thanks, Tim, time's up. Well, once again, I'm happy to be here, I appreciate...
Well, once again, I'm happy to be here, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you guys about what we've been doing and where we got, how we got there. You know, with time being a factor, I kind of wanted to bring us up to where we're at. We realized a few years ago, as everyone else did, that, you know, we had this epidemic. And I think every community was trying to, to fight to come up with some type of an answer to it, you know? What, where are we going to do, what's best practices? And because of that, as the DA mentioned, out of that came the creation of the task force for the county. There was a point, and I think a lot of you could probably agree, that we would miss one task force meeting to go to another. It was just too much going on. So we kind of collaborated that to the county model. Sheriff McDonald and DA Cruz led that, that, that venture. So at that, at those meetings, you had all your specialists there, you had your law enforcement people, you had the courts, you had medical people, the schools, you had clergy. And it was a brainstorming. And what came out of that, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, I think Dr. Mendoza mentioned it, and I know Sarah Cloud mentioned it, and even Jen might have mentioned it, the, the two big things that came out that really, really stood out to us was the stigma, which unfortunately still exists, and unfortunately people die because of stigma. Family members and loved ones don't come forward, and that's a problem today. So we noticed that the stigma was a big thing. And the medical personnel, we would learn every day something from some group, and they would continually tell us that 12, 24-hour next-day treatment is crucial, it's a crucial intervention time for someone involved in this. We, as the police, realized that we have this front row seat to the problem. We go to every overdose. Now, at the time, we were talking just Plymouth, but we, as police officers in the entire county and in the Commonwealth and probably the country, we arrive to, if not all overdoses, we're there. So we know Jimmy Joe overdosed. What can we do? We started out by giving out a brochure to, to maybe have some resources for the family. And that quick, we quickly learned, as the DA mentioned, somewhere around 40% of the time, if you overdose in one community, you live in another. So how is that going to work? We don't have any agreements with other communities, so we, we started growing and expanding. Chief Allen from East Bridgewater had a phenomenal program going on back a couple of years ago in East Bridgewater, EB Hope. EB Hope is a drop-in center model, and I'm sure he's going to talk a little bit about that. Since then, we collaborated together. We started, you know, going to all the chiefs in the community, in, in the county and talking to them about it. And it became a program that you didn't want to not belong to. You didn't want to be that one or two or three towns that's not involved in the outreach program, because it was, it, it would, it would fit a community that had one overdose a month, or a community that had 10 overdoses in a week. The model's the same. It's that collaboration, that piece in those, those relationships that we created. So I, I had gotten the Southern District of 12 towns on board and, and reached out with to Scott, and, and he was able to coordinate the Northern groups. So between the two of us, we'd coordinate the entire county, and we have meetings, and we had a Southern meeting yesterday, the DA was there. We, and he'll have a Northern meeting, and we'll have 50 people, 60 people at these meetings to collaborate, talk about tracking our information and how our database works, which is something that Chief Allen will talk a little more about as well.
Right.
But I just want to get into that. Is that three minutes? Is that what you're saying? Is it? I'm going to go for one minute, but I'll be real quick. We, so what we do in Plymouth County, if you overdose in, in anywhere in Plymouth County, an email will go out, self-generated, to users that sign on to the agreement, and it'll say, "There's an overdose." Our key component, our key partners, they're all key partners, but the most key partner are the hospitals. We need to know if the subject went to the hospital and took help and entered into treatment. Because if they did, we can't then go and ask them to enter into treatment, it would devalue the program. So about half the time, we find they take help, and the other half, we just need someone to tell us at the hospital, "You know what? Follow-up's warranted, it's all we need." And then I activate our system. The next day or within 24 hours, we go to the home, plainclothes with a clinician or a recovery coach, and we look on to it. We stay within our lanes, we're not professionals, we're not there to treat them, we just know that it happened, so we bring you the resource. And then we leave a packet, and we think even assist, even if we go to a home and we leave a packet, we've done something. Now, we thought early on about half the time they'd turn us away. Half the time, people would say, you know, "I don't want any help." But we were okay with that, because half the time we're helping people. No one turns us away. We just don't get turned away. It just doesn't happen. That's how strong the stigma is. We're bringing the resource to them, we're in their living room, in the kitchen, was mentioned earlier. It's a safe environment. Everyone takes our information, and as Sarah mentioned, about 85% of the time, they do enter into some type of help. So we believe it's a strong program. I'll end with the, the piece that I think's the most important. This model that we have here is this collaboration of all these agencies. It will work for any problem you come up with. It happens to be the opioid issue we're dealing with. It's that collaboration, knocking down those barriers and walls and working together. So as a team, we have these, not only partnerships, but through partnership, develop relationships. As Judge Minahan mentioned early, a relationship where you make a phone call and things get done. We make a phone, Judge Julian's taken over in Judge Minahan's place, and he does the same thing. I talked to him on the phone yesterday, he was at our meeting. That's six minutes, you're done. You can't. You're out. I took your time, Scott. All right, I'll wrap up. That's the strength of our program. The collaboration and that partnership, that's the strength, that's why this works.
Chief, thank you very much for the testimony. By the way, they get to go over three minutes, they have guns. Everybody else, everyone else.
Thank you very much. I'm used to being the cleanup hitter here. Your Honor, Chair, we, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I will make this real quick to, to cover some things, but that county collaboration that we have, it's, it is unique. Chief Botteri and I, we sit on the National Council for the Police-Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. I've been across the country now, and I can tell you, there is no one that has this collaboration. And it's not law enforcement, it's law enforcement-led, but then into all the partners, hospitals, healthcare, treatment. Hillary Dubois from the Brockton Area Opioid Awareness Prevention Collaborative, I know that, I got that down pat, but she's a key person, a cell source. Sarah Cloud, we talk regularly. Unfortunately, this morning, as an administrator of our, our data sharing program, there's been eight overdoses throughout the county. But the great thing about it is we're able to shield, share that information in real time. 44% of the overdoses in the north part of the county where Brockton is, they don't happen in the town that you live in, they happen in a neighboring town. If we were not sharing that information in real time, those are missed opportunities. That 12 to 24 response that we have in the follow-up visits came from Chief Botteri's Project Outreach with BID Plymouth. That is now replicated across the county. And again, we are not experts, and I have a couple of notes here. Plymouth County Outreach, we do not pretend to be experts, we refer those suffering from sides to the experts. We do not step outside of our warehouse. We are law enforcement, and we recognize that. The public health experts, they are the experts. We want to collaborate and partner with them. And we do not coerce, threaten, or put anyone to treatment, you know? In a very small percentage, and I'm talking 2% or less of the time, we'll do Section 35s. Our data shows that. I think there's a perception out there that we're just forcing people into treatment. I did 30 of those overdose outreach visits myself before I became chief. I never got turned away at the door. I had someone in recovery who I, you know, knew from law enforcement 15 years prior, him and I are knocking that door together. And it's really a neat, you know, thing to see happen. It's organic, and it really is a special thing. It's another opportunity. Our drop-in center models, again, just another opportunity to get people to the experts. That's what we do. We introduce people to the experts. We would have moms and dads look at us, say, "What are you going to do to help me and my family?" We would just say, "Section people," that's what we were trained. Now we know the experts. The experts have told us, "Here, here are the resources, introduce them." You know, I have a great partnership with Julio Hayder, the BSAS, our recovery coach, coordinator. We've gotten 20 recovery coaches trained through the BSAS program for our Plymouth County model. Today, recovery coaches, people in recovery, will be going out to houses with plainclothes police officers in different parts of the county, offering treatment. And again, the data is still, we're still gathering. We've just got up to speed on 2017, we're starting to back enter 2016. It's law enforcement only, it's what we've been tracking forever. This is what goes into our police log, so it's not, we haven't created something that we haven't been doing in law enforcement for decades. It's just now we're sharing that across those jurisdictional boundaries. You know, and the one thing I'll, I'll end with is, as law enforcement, we recognize prevention and education. In my town, through DPH and those partnerships, we've introduced Botfin Life Skills Training Curriculum in East Bridgewater, grade six, seven, and eighth. Evidence-based, we recognize what that is. That's now implemented. The Adventure, and I know the Plymouth has got a great program. My superintendent and the assistant superintendent are working with the Attorney General on this pilot curriculum they're putting out. We're doing those things. We do the Handle With Care, we call a kid in need. If someone's exposed to trauma in my community, Ed Jacobs did our training with the law enforcement in the school, they'll get a notification. Johnny was a kid, is a kid in need. That's all they know, but they know something happened at the home, overdose or otherwise, but we don't tell them that. They just know that Johnny's going to need some extra attention. And now their behavioral specialists are aware of that. So this is really a multifaceted, all-encompassing approach that we're doing here in Plymouth County.
Thank you, Chief. And to both chiefs, to the district attorney, appreciate your testimony today. And again, this is another one of those things for continuing conversation. If you all can too, for the programs that you've seen, particularly the ones that are upstream prevention, the ones that you've seen that are effective versus ones that you don't think are as effective, because we know for decades we were funding their programs and other programs. If you could be able to share those with us, we'll, we'll be emailing you back and forth. But I appreciate you being at the front lines for this, and appreciate not only what you're doing with, with helping for what I call the recovery coaches out in, in among the community, but, but making sure that people, they're breaking down some of those walls between police, law enforcement, and our communities. Appreciate all of your testimony. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chief Allen. We're not all.
Our next person to testify is from the Massachusetts Hospital Association. We have Anuj Goel.
Anuj Goel.
Anuj Goel. Thank you. Anuj Goel. Thank you very much. And next, and then we're going to have Emery Galvin, Hillary Dubois, and Stephanie Patton with Karen McDonald on deck, so just be ready.
Great. Sorry, how much time do we have?
Three minutes.
Great. I'm a lawyer, I can speak fast. So, my name's Anuj Goel, I'm the Vice President of Legal Regulatory Affairs at the Massachusetts Health and Hospital Association, represent Cantwell Members' Commission. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and present today. So I wanted to really talk about more from a statewide perspective about what some of the things that we are doing with our entire community and how it can really influence in terms of your thoughts and considerations. I did send a, a set of slides over for you all to look at, and if you can just send it around to everybody, so they have it. But I'll talk very briefly off the slides and talk about what we're doing to give you a sense, and at the end, have some solutions and ideas for you all to consider as well. First and foremost, as Judge Minahan is actually the co-chair of this first initiative, is our BHUAR, our Behavioral Health Unfinished Agenda Reform Initiative. And the goal was to pull together a diverse stakeholder group of providers, payers, government agencies, community-based providers and others, sit down and say, "What can we, as a shared perspective, do to actually change the system?" Represent, we come to you all the time up to the State House, saying we need more money, we need this, 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 but what as a group, without bothering you all, can we do generally to really combat the problem we're all seeing? Three specific action teams were developed from this group, and let me just talk through them briefly. So first and foremost is community engagement. As you heard today from both the hospital, the police, and others, is, the goal is to pull together statewide, what are all of these common examples that you heard today and others around the state? And what are those barriers, those problems, those initiatives that have worked, that has not worked, that we can pull together and push out statewide to provider community, but also come back and say from a legislative regulatory payer perspective, are there key things that we need your help to streamline to make some of these programs more effective statewide? Second issue is a community database. Things you heard today, the biggest problem we have for a healthcare provider, a patient, a family, is you get discharged from a hospital or a treatment center, where the heck do you go? Who is available in your community? Are they still there? Are they still active? So the goal is to develop a comprehensive, interactive database of what are those community-based resources? And the goal is, once we have that, that basis, to be able to come to the State House or EOHHS and say, "Here it is, how do we get this in place? Help us put this in place, and we can actually do something more." Last but not least is the workforce. And the goal here is to really look at streamlining some of the regulatory administrative process that is seen by increasing the number of psychiatrists, social work in the community. More importantly, developing collaborative arrangements related to those individuals with other primary care providers, many of which you heard today, but many of what they're doing is not reimbursable. Or they have to go through hoops with the Board of Registration Medicine, Board of Registration Nursing, other boards to do these programs and initiatives, and we really, that is just, it's nonsensical. And those are things that we're hoping of those three groups, coming forth with some really tangible, common solutions, say that, one, we can implement generally, and, two, to bring to all of you and say, "Please help us." I know we bug Steve Sidlavich at DMH quite a bit on some of these, and that's some of the goals that we're hoping to bring the agencies as well. Quickly moving on is, I want to turn to a couple areas, and actually, I'll do this very briefly. So two areas that MHA is working on that I want to just address and make sure you all are aware, and a couple people at the table are part of this as well. So on ED boarding, the biggest problem we have in the state from a hospital perspective is psych and substance use disorder patients stuck in our EDs. You can't move them, you can't do anything. So working with the state, we have developed this very collaborative arrangement between the providers and payers and community-based entities to sit down and say, "Can we, as a group, forget the regulatory process and coming to the State House, can we, as a group, develop a internal process and system to better manage ourselves? Every patient is stuck, can we come up with a streamlined escalation process, a review process? Get all the health plans to give special services and special coverage options to providers to move that patient out of the ED and give it into an appropriate placement, whether it's inpatient or outpatient?" So that's one area that we are constantly working on, and have been pretty successful in developing a plan, and we're now working with DMH and EOHHS to fully implement that and get that moving, hopefully within the next couple of months. Last but not least is our pre-managed ED initiative, and I want to really emphasize this one thing because it's really critical. What we have done is developed a statewide system, stream, cloud-based streamlined system that will connect every single hospital in Massachusetts. Even hospitals part of the main system, the biggest problem is they can't talk to each other within a minute's notice of a patient walking the door. We've developed a system, by the end of this calendar year, every hospital will be live. So if a patient walks into BI Plymouth, South Shore, Cape Cod, South Coast, the moment they walk in, that ED provider will know that who that patient is, where they were, prior prescription information, care management models that they're part of, and we can connect them to, to help them with their discharge planning. So this is a, it's taken a long time for us finally to get there, but we have this really great workable solutions. Now, very quickly, last piece on all of this is, what do we need from all of you to get there? So I want to just mention three very quick legislative proposals that we are pushing that would really be helpful if we can get this. And by the way, this is a first for MHA. I am not coming to you for money. This is actually a budget neutral, it's administratively easy, does not require a lot of work on the agencies, but it's going to streamline the administrative bureaucracy that we have to go through to really make this all work. First and foremost, House Bill 2469 filed by our Simaia. This is our MassPAP bill. This would streamline the current MassPAP system to allow any provider, hospital, health center, physician office, to immediately access the MassPAP system, pull that data into their database, so they can look at that patient timely. Right now, you still have to, from your EMR, go to a separate website, a separate process. You're not allowed to keep that information, maintain it for healthcare planning, your coordination purposes, everything you can do within a HIPAA for a specific purpose. Second one is House Bill 2404. This was also filed by Representative Maya in the Mental Health Committee. And, you know, the key thing here is really, we heard a lot about prior authorizations, processes we go through. I'm sure many providers in this room, the biggest problem in Massachusetts, Beacon Health Plan. Did you know that Beacon Health Plan right now, you want to get coverage for a mass health patient, you need a physician-to-physician conversation, detailed conversation to get the coverage, to get the patient into treatment. You have to go through administrative barriers to show that the patient has failed all various services before they'll cover that patient. So there's things that we're doing in House Bill 2404 that will streamline that process and get that patient moving. Last but not least, and I'll shut up, is House Bill 21205 filed by Representative Paracella. So we talk about all these various things that we're doing. Problem is, that we have federal law, state law, and various other privacy considerations that are out there and saying, which rules do we follow? What this bill would do is say, every single process, no matter what we do for sharing of information, moving of patients, follow the federal HIPAA standards. And the way that you transmit information, you follow the federal HIPAA transactions, electronic process, security, privacy concerns, et cetera. It would really help us know, there's one rule, one standard, not multiple, that we spend hours trying to figure out how to manipulate or move and get through to get that patient out the door. Have one standard that we're all following and we agree with would be great. Short, sweet, sorry, but, any questions? MassPAP is the new prescription monitoring program in Massachusetts, yes.
Which has been phenomenally successful.
I would say the MassPAP system, just generally speaking, is a thousand times better than the old PMT system. It is much, much better, but it is not fully integrated within any EMR system in the state. And that would be wonderful if we could.
We would love to learn more ways to make that most effective. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your testimony. Oh, please.
Hi, I'm Myriam Frankelis. The whole point of what you're proposing is it really to develop a seamless continuum of care where every system is coordinated with the communication and the collaboration.
That is correct. And one of the key things is, we've, for example, Anuj said he's at the table, and many of her members, the health plans, have all agreed and looked at this saying, this makes sense. Yes, there's IT issues we got to jump through to make it work, but yes, the idea is continuous communication, and more importantly, as I was talking about, that care management system. Where is the patient? What have they been set up with? Who's currently working with that patient? And we can direct them to, instead of saying, I don't know what to do with the patient, here's a pill, or here's a prescription, good luck. That's not what we should be doing. We should be connecting them with the right person, and that's what we're hoping to do.
Anuj, thank you very much for your leadership. Thank you, by the way, just I know you're helping to lead the Behavioral Health Unfinished Agenda Group. I appreciate it.
Actually, Judgment A Hand is, so, thank you her.
When we came up, we appreciated the invitation to come up and present to you a couple months ago.
Correct.
Please say hello to Steve Walsh for me.
Definitely will. Definitely will.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Now, I think we'll call as a panel, just to make sure that that will do the best time-wise. We have our rock star in prevention locally from Situate, Anne Marie Galvin. Hilary Dubois from Brockton. Hilary, I know, used to be from Marshall. Stephanie Patton and Karen McDonald from Stoughton. If you all could come up, please, leaders of our community coalitions. And Tracy, sure. Tracy Kamalang. Come on up.
I see that collaboration.
From Karen. There we go. Tracy Wojciechowski from Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Now, you make sure you got to hit the button in front so that we can pick you up.
We all know, I don't need a microphone. But, it will be helpful. Thank you so much for inviting all of us. It's been really wonderful to hear about the collaboration, specifically in Plymouth, the town of Plymouth and across Plymouth County. My name is Anne Marie Galvin, and I work for the town of Situate, where I am the Substance Misuse Prevention Coordinator for that community in Plymouth County. And what I've learned doing this work for the past seven years is that, in many, many ways, Massachusetts is really ahead. Despite what we hear about the consequences of substance use disorder and undertreated behavioral health problems, and the opioid epidemic that we're all swirling in, there are many, many positive best class examples happening here in Massachusetts. So I'm going to be as succinct as I possibly can and give you my, at the commission, my asks from my lived experience working in this prevention field, in this space. There are many systems of prevention already at play here in Massachusetts. My job is coordinating a drug-free communities program, which is a federal grant for primary prevention, where we use data and evidence-based practices and collaboration to achieve goals. We track the data, we report on it to the federal government, but it's the White House to the community. We are the second most funded state in the country for DFC coalitions, next to California. And if you look at people that were previously funded, groups that, like the Falmouth Prevention Collaborative, that's now been absorbed by Gosnold as a prevention unit, there are many legacy DFC coalitions in Massachusetts. So we're well above 50 ongoing primary prevention coalitions. If you couple the DFC model in Massachusetts with the BSAS-funded coalitions, also primary prevention evidence-based programs, so the MOPCs and the SAPCs and all of those coalitions, which number over 50, there are more than 100 communities in Massachusetts that have funded prevention, boots on the ground, trained professionals that know the evidence-based programs, and have implemented them with great success. So my ask of the commission is to look, which you are doing very broadly, but to look very specifically at these models and best practices that we're already doing with great success in Massachusetts, and stitch it together. Put the federal money and the state money and stitch it together. Let's look at all those communities, besides those 100 or so that have people like us, and where are the gaps? In my opinion, you shouldn't have to write a very labor-intensive grant to be funded in prevention in Massachusetts. I propose a Massachusetts model where every community is funded. That we harness the power of prevention that's on the ground right here. There's many more of us, they're all very busy. But stitch what's here together, and let's scale it. Let's make sure every community, every borough, every city, has boots on the ground to support what I know this commission will be coming up with, best practices. And please call upon us at any time to inform that, because we really do have lots of information. So that's number one, a system, please, a skilled system. And number two, one simple thing we can do right away is use the data that we're collecting. The state of Massachusetts administers, are you going to flag me? I got my own three minutes, right? Okay, good. We're collecting lots of data already, youth risk behavior data, various systems of collecting data. We input it all, and the kids do it on their phones. It's very easy, it's actually free. And we can do that in all Massachusetts communities. We can do that in our public school systems. The state does an aggregated survey every other year, but it's not shared back out. So it's aggregated for the state, so we can look at trends across Massachusetts. But we should unroll that and give it to the communities. Is it alcohol in your high school? Is it marijuana? Is it prescription drugs? And use that. So we will have, we'll be able to invest in programming correctly. We'll be able to target our universal prevention and our targeted prevention across the state. So that's number two. And finally, I'd like to help develop a menu of what works. Actually, the menu's been written, it's been researched. It's called Blueprints. There's also a SAMSA database. There's a blueprint called Blueprints, as I said. And we can do some of the baseline universal prevention absolutely everywhere in Massachusetts. Life skills in schools, we've already started screening this year in our public schools. We will be doing a verbal screening in eighth and 10th grade. We should do a little bit more to create referral systems when we identify those kids we're using early. That's happening across the state. The state's done a moderate investment in life skills, and we can do more, almost done. That's universal. That's all kids in schools, evidence-based, two evidence-based programs that they can enlighten further. One thing that's often missing is the family component, as the judge pointed out. There are selected interventions we can do for family members to give the parents and caregivers and grandparents evidence-based skills to prevent substance use in their kids. We use Guiding Good Choices in Situate. Many communities use Strengthening Families, which can be implemented by churches. Those are two more programs that we know what works. So last but not least, let's please remember to always rely on the science of prevention. And it's not rocket science, but it is prevention science, and we know what to do. So thanks so much for this opportunity, yeah.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Hi, I'm Hilary Dubois. I'm the Director of Prevention Services for High Point. I think I've been identified several times as working for the Justice City of Brockton, but I actually work with nine communities in Plymouth County in southeastern Massachusetts. Brockton obviously being the largest urban community, but I do work with all the neighboring local communities. What I think works in prevention, and I think unfortunately, linking promotion and prevention sometimes is going to overshadow the importance of prevention, because it's going to be really hard when people like Seamus so bravely stand up and talk about their experience. You know, we talk about the tree falling in the woods, and if no one hears it, did it happen? Well, if a tree is going to fall in the woods, but has support and interventions to keep it from falling, that's, that voice is going to speak so much louder than if, how did you measure if none of those trees actually fall? Would they have fallen? We don't know. So, to make sure that prevention definitely has its own segment in this conversation, I think is crucially important. I think what works with us is, we actually fund, we're funded through five state and federal grants, all of which have federal origins. I run a commune effectively. And the reason that I do that is because it allows for our communities to not be limited by, I can only talk to you about opioids, I can only talk to you about alcohol. And we still have gaps, right? So, by linking substances together and having a single conversation about all substances, and not just limiting them to the priorities of a funding stream. Engaging people in the conversation through their whole life process, and not just talking about school-aged issues as a prevention and saying, I've done this, looking at everything from early intervention and obstetrics, all the way through working with senior citizens. And allowing them to be engaged in that conversation. Communities have a voice, and grassroots initiatives do work. Making people aware that you can meet them where they're at, and you can see how they can have value in this conversation at all different levels. And obviously, really being aware, thoughtful, and thinking about trends and what's coming along next. What can help funding work better? If we look at the actual state-originated fundings in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there's really not much. It all has federal origins. And that's a frightening thing to be someone who does prevention on a community level, who knows the importance of it right now, to be looking at Washington and saying, please keep us in your thoughts. I do think funding works on a regional group. I think that certainly the larger urban communities are important. But it's also, I think, limiting to just think that this is a Brockton issue, and not to think that they're worthy of that support as well. Looking at how funding can be more sustainable, but thinking of that beyond just having a community put a line item in. I live in a community that I will not send my children to that public school, and I work in a community where there's not enough law enforcement. So to ask that community to come up with their own money, it's just not realistic. And access to certainly evidence-based is important, but thinking about promising initiatives. The work that they've done in Plymouth County through the Outreach Initiative was something where their community people, their prevention people said, work with us, help us. And they took on an initiative with their own best interest and information, and thought about what they could do. But, it's not evidence-based. It's promising, and they've done a lot with it, but looking at promising initiatives in addition to just the evidence-based. Thinking outside of the rigidity of funding lines. And what we can achieve through that is a diverse network that builds initiative from initiative to initiative, and it creates an adaptable community response. And if we're really going to get ahead of things in upstream prevention, we need to be adaptable, diverse, and collaborative. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much.
I'm going to move this closer. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Stephanie Patton, and I'm the Prevention Coordinator for the town of Stoughton. I work on the ground in the town of Stoughton doing upstream substance abuse prevention for Stoughton's youth with the Oasis Coalition. And I guess Anne Marie referred to us as a legacy DFC coalition. We are graduated from drug use communities. Yay! Our focus is preventing early drug use with our young people. So typically, that's alcohol and marijuana. You're not really going to hear me talk about opiates. And I think that's really what has the largest impact on the developing adolescent brain. So when we say upstream, and we're thinking about preventing long-term challenges, I think alcohol, marijuana. Every day in our communities, lots and lots of things go right. Every day, kids go to school, families spend quality time together, teens refrain from doing drugs and alcohol. And even though risk reduction is a really critical component to prevention, health promotion, growing and building the things that go right in communities, and those protective factors, including policies and culture where health can flourish, is also critically important. So in order to do this, I think we need a few things. We need to work with local leaders to reinforce the linkages that are necessary for effective community-wide prevention strategies, like addressing local policy issues and promoting safe, supportive environments for our youth. And I really believe that cross-sector collaboration works, especially when those non-traditional partners, like town planners, fire departments, local government, police, the DPW, when they all see themselves as part of that healthy community web. And in Stoughton, because of these types of cross-sector partnerships, we've been able to do a lot of creative things, including building a new park in a place where there was historically risky teen behavior. So in the prevention world, we call that environmental management, right? We independent, we were the first community to independently equip our police department with a nasal lock zone, dark hand. And we were the first, and we were the first to do that in the Commonwealth. And as a community, we also opt, we are one of the first communities to opt out of retail marijuana sales, both by ballot and then town meeting. And these changes wouldn't have been possible if not for all of the collaborative efforts between lots of departments and agencies. And of course, this kind of community change didn't come overnight. The Oasis Coalition has benefited over the years from a full-time prevention staff person, paid first through grant funding, and now through a town-funded position. Technical support and training and prevention best practices through state and local agencies like Mastap, the former Regional Centers for Healthy Communities, CADCA, and our collaborations with Dr. Lincolnback and the Montana Institute. And I believe that the Commonwealth needs more support for emerging unfunded coalitions who haven't had that benefit yet, to help them mature into coalitions that can make sustainable change. A lot of well-meaning groups have been created by passionate people in the Commonwealth wanting to address particularly the opiate issue. And oftentimes, they have no understanding of prevention science, and why would they? Where would they get that information? But there is a lot of evidence-based practice in the prevention field, and we need to figure out a more effective way to get it out into the rest of our communities who could really benefit from that work. To take that idea one step further, I also believe that the Commonwealth could benefit from a statewide policy group that could share best practices and model languages for local policies, bylaws, and ordinances. And I think it would be really great to have a single entity who really was keeping tabs on some of those public health policies at the state level, maybe it's this commission, so that prevention practitioners and their partners can really be aware of opportunities to provide testimony or to educate their communities about an issue. Of course, before any good strategy implementation, communities need data. And I believe that quality data collection is critical for strategic planning. In Stoughton, we're lucky to have both the resources and expertise to administer a biannual youth health survey to every sixth through 12th grader in the district since 2005. In the past, we, you have actually used the Communities That Care Survey, which I know you all are looking at. In my experience, the CTC survey can be fantastic, and Stoughton used the CTC to identify local risk and protective factors. But we found that a significant challenge was actually finding someone who had the formulas for the analysis needed for those risk and protective factors, and had access to the National Comparison Database. Furthermore, the length of the survey was cumbersome for our schools, and it was difficult to add in the other measures that were important to us locally. So as a result, in our community, we shifted to a modified YRBS survey. In addition to the standard YRBS questions, our survey also includes additional questions around marijuana use, including what forms are used and how students get access, which we think is critically important right now, as well as questions about student perceptions of peer drug and alcohol behavior and attitudes. The perception questions, we believe, are critical in understanding one of the key risk factors in youth substance use, which is misperceptions about peer use. In other words, most students don't drink alcohol, but they believe that most of their peers do. And the research tells us that this gap between perception and reality is an important risk factor to measure and address. Furthermore, I would support providing school districts the resources to administer a standard Massachusetts youth survey with the expectation that the surveys would be given to every student. The current random sampling practice for the statewide YRBS means that it would be challenging for a school to generate enough data to use it locally. So the state can't, it's hard for them to give that back, because they don't survey enough students. In this way, I feel like the state could build a more robust data pool, and local districts could receive a report about their student body with state comparison data. And also, I would need to stop.
Please. But what I would say, for your written testimony, it's very valuable, and you knocked off three of my questions.
That's good. Well, I was in the last paragraph, so I almost made it.
Thank you. And please, if you could follow up, you can follow up with written testimony to us as well. Thank you, three minutes, please.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. So my name is Karen McDonald, and I am the, I have the unique position of being the Director of both the Stoughton Youth Commission and the Stoughton Council on Aging. So, but what I really wanted to talk about today a little bit is the, really the continuum of care between the youth and the Council on Aging. And one of the, one of my asks would be to have a formula similar to the Formula Grant that the Council on Aging's have for youth. Where, for the Council on Aging, they get, per senior, they get a dollar amount for this year. And so thank you guys for all, for voting for that, by the way, at 9.7. And so I think that one of the things that this ability does for the, on the elderly side, is to have somebody who's dedicated to be able to look at trends from, in the aging population. And I also believe that that is something that we need on the youth side as well. And this is not to take away from the schools or any of those pieces of that. But I think that, that prevention starts not only at the school-age level, but it's the preschool level, it's all of those things. If we can, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, is the whole thing. So if we can catch problems early, when parents are starting to be stressed, when they're starting to struggle, then that becomes a place for us to intervene at a much lower level before it gets to a risk or a problem level. So one of the things that, as a social worker, I have to say that when parents are stressed financially and emotionally, it is harder to parent their children. So, one of the things that has happened, fuel assistance, SNAP benefits are all decreasing rapidly. People are finding more and more economic challenges. If those economic challenges happen at, when the children are young, it is, you know, if you think about, if you go back to Mansell's hierarchy of needs, if you can't feed and clothe your children, it is harder to make them, think about them doing well in math or reading. And if they don't learn to read by the time they're in the third grade, you know what I'm saying? Like, up to the third grade, you learn to read, and after the third grade, you read to learn. So, do you understand, like, so already those gaps can be established. But I think that for me, seeing the whole family as the, what the elders can bring, what the kids can bring. So for me, I do it definitely on that local, that local level, because local solutions work. So what works for us in Stoughton doesn't necessarily work for my hometown of Braintree. And for me, those, that Formula Grant model, where it could be local solutions, but it could have somebody who's, you know, for me, as the Council on Aging Director, my job is to advocate for seniors, my job is to, to help find the solutions for them, but there's not somebody who is based on that for the youth. So thank you very much for your time, and thank you again for the fundings that you were able to provide for us.
Thank you very much. And Tracy?
Yes, thank you so much.
Can I just bring the mic room right up?
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity today. My name is, I think I should get an extra 30 seconds, my last name is Wojciechowski. Yeah. So, yeah, my name is Tracy Wojciechowski, and I'm the Regional Director of Student Assistance Programs for Karen Treatment Centers. Karen's actually one of the largest and oldest addiction treatment and behavioral healthcare facilities in the country. We've been around 60 years. And for 27 years, we've actually been doing prevention. We know how important that is to, to end the addiction crisis, is really looking at prevention, education, and early intervention services. So I'm just going to tell you a few things that we really believe in, that we've, we utilize in that 27 years. We truly believe a collective, comprehensive response is needed across multiple sectors, which you've seen today, for prevention to work. Community mobilization, environmental strategies, and school-based prevention all play a role. And when you look at school-based prevention, Life Skills was mentioned several times today. We believe in that program. It's actually shown to reduce tobacco, alcohol, and illicit drug use by 80% when done effectively implemented with fidelity. So I would also encourage that there are continued to be training for staff so that they are able to do that effectively. We also know a program like Life Skills starts at third grade. There is a missing piece. We need education to start kindergarten or preschool. There is a program called PATHS. It's promoting alternative thinking strategies, and that is an evidence-based program that we truly believe in as well. We know these programs should be long-term, with repeated interventions. Science shows that they work, if we do it that way. Also, Anne Marie mentioned strengthening families and guiding good choices. Also, Anne Marie mentioned strengthening families and guiding good choices. Those are family-based prevention programs. That will maximize the impact of the school-based programs. So we'd like to see that as well. We, we know that supported scientific evidence shows that substance misuse and substance use disorders actually can be, excuse me, reliably identified through screening. So we would like to continue, there to be continued funding for ESPT.
Okay.
We think that's really important, and I know the schools are implementing that. And we also, there's a program called Teen Intervene, which is an ESPT model of care that we believe should be integrated with that universal prevention. Teen Intervene basically works with students who are identified with mild to moderate substance abuse issues. And then finally...
I'm sure, tell them how that works, because of the three...
Oh, yes. It's our, Teen Intervene is, you're going to take my time. Teen Intervene is three sessions. It's similar to the Preventure Initiative, where you work with students, either one-on-one or in a group, that have been identified. Schools are telling us with that ESPT model, what do we do once we identify those students? So Teen Intervene is, is the answer to that. And then finally, we believe additional funding is necessary to support comprehensive training for healthcare professionals. We've actually integrated that into our continuum six years ago. We started that at Karen, and we've trained 500 professionals. And we know that that works. They're in a unique position to really prevent adolescent substance use. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Perfect. And just for the commission, I know we may have questions, but I want to thank each and every one of you, because I know when this bill was being drafted, when we turned to each of you to, to reach out and to be able to, to rally representatives and senators in your region. So thank you for your individual advocacy. You should know that that as a whole, we are definitely looking at, the centerpiece of what we're talking and proposing is starting with your community coalitions. And that is one question before we get into any others, is do you think the Communities That Care model, do you see that interfering with your existing coalition systems? Or how do you see that complementing them?
It's very similar. It's a very similar structure to the DFC model and some of the state models. So, no, it's wonderful. That's a, that's a true system that can be trained on, and you can scale it then, if people are using the same language and approach.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, thank you again for your testimony. If you could please email us your testimony as a follow-up, and that we will be bouncing ideas off you as we're coming up with our recommendations. But thank you yet again for all of your testimony. Thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now, we have the Director of Public Health Department for Plymouth, Dr. Nate Horowitz-Willis. Nate, come right up, doctor.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you for your work. And next, on deck, Tina Camaro. Trina, I apologize. Trina, I apologize. You're on deck. Thank you.
So I just got here in August, August the 28th, so I'm the...
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm the new kid on the block here. But I'll get right to it here. So we all know that the opioid epidemic is an unfortunate example concerning the evolution of public health disease threats to the population here in Plymouth. It fascinates me that we're dealing with an epidemic touted as one of the worst since the HIV/AIDS epidemic in the 80s. So a poor review of the Port Weekly Database, what I found is that a lot of our prevention is primarily focused on the tertiary prevention phase. Now, here in Plymouth, in the South Shore, the, the efforts aren't really looking at secondary or primary prevention compared to that. But I must say that I do applaud the current efforts being taken upon by a lot of our community collaborators here. And as a leading public health official in the largest town by land area here in the Commonwealth, it's my responsibility to ensure that public health is at the hub of the prevention wheel. So I do want to make sure I ensure that we, we are having optimal health and well-being for the town of Plymouth's population. And I want to reassure the public that my department will be a leader in this and many more public health efforts for years to come. Currently, I'm developing creative upstream strategic plans for the implementation of data-driven, evidence-based practices concerning this epidemic and other public health issues to our town. Such plans and practices will foster health promotion, prevention, and protection of the population during this opioid epidemic that will get to effective outcomes for all people affected and for those that may have a moderate to high-risk exposure potential. Our plan is to effectively utilize the public health system's resources with this approach while maximizing prevention across the population within this region. As a town government entity, we cannot do this alone, and we want to build and leverage collaborative partnerships across the public health system to be inclusive of diverse community stakeholders that desire a healthy community. This also means it's vital for us to have reliable funding, more professional strength staff, and the ability to provide innovative public health methods. And these must be backed by evidence-based research. With that said, I'm asking for the commission's and the public's confidence and support in the Plymouth Public Health Department to promote positive health outcomes and prevention techniques in this region. So my testimony here is more of an awareness piece, because historically, as I understand, my public health department has not been at the hub of prevention. And as you can see, we have a lot of people in the community that are involved, and not a lot, a lot of talk has been talked about the public health department. So I just want you guys to keep us at the forefront of that. I know funding is going to be limited, it's going to be a stretch, and I have to make do with what I have. But I'm sure you guys will be seeing a lot come out of my department. And thank you for allowing me to come before you all.
Doctor, thank you. And please, and if you have written testimony to get this provided to us, if you want to grab Tim down at the end and pass it off to him, and appreciate, as you're coming up with plans, we appreciate the collaboration. We'll be sharing what we develop as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. And also from the town of Plymouth, you, now, Trina, you were already, the superintendent already was singing your praises before, so we appreciate you coming forward. You're the principal of Federal Furnace School here in Plymouth. Trina Camaro.
And I was asked to click this a couple times, so...
Okay.
I clicked it three times. We'll see if that works. Don't start my time yet.
No, we won't.
It doesn't seem to be working. I don't know. Oh?
Fantasy, let's see if they ask.
Is that where I'm supposed to go? Okay.
That's fine.
So, yes, my name is Trina Gilardi-Camaro, and I am Principal of Federal Furnace Elementary School here in Plymouth. But I have been in public education for 20 years. I have worked in the towns of Situate, Barnstable, and Plymouth. I have served in many capacities as a teacher and an administrator, ranging from early childhood education through, through middle school. I also, through this work, you've heard some talk about Ed Jacobs. I happened to meet Ed Jacobs through the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative that the DA's office promotes. So I was able to bring his work to our school here in Plymouth a number of years ago. Since then, I've sort of taken on a role as an educator of other educators. And I do, I'm an adjunct professor at Leslie University. They have Leslie's Institute for Trauma Sensitivity, and they provide education for teachers and staff about that. So I'm here to tell you a little bit about what this does look like in schools and the very little ones, the students whose families are in crisis or who are predisposed in different ways. And it is a big problem, and my colleagues and I do, do see that. Some weeks, we all have the need to call for crisis services, evaluations at ERs multiple times. And we're talking little kids, you know, in elementary school. And I know the preschools are struggling as well. So because of this, we've tried a lot of things. Because there's not a lot of funding, we just have to get creative. So we've taken some of our own staff. At my school, we created what we call a Transitional Learning Center for youth who exhibit these characteristics, who we've either attempted to have looked at by hospitals or maybe going to outpatient, inpatient settings, sometimes when they're coming back. We've done that in collaboration with the Brookline Center. So the B-R-Y-T program, the Bright program, they tend to work with secondary schools. We are the first elementary school that they've consulted with, and it seems to be going pretty well. The issue is funding and staffing. So right now, we are staffing that just with, through Title I funds. So for academic support, we have Title I-funded teachers, and just our regular school adjustment counselor, who was already funded through the local budget. So she's providing counseling services daily to six to eight students, which is, is huge. And the need is more. It's great, really greater than that. So I'm going to talk for a second about the ACEs study. Again, I know that was brought up here. I read it on your website, it was brought up before. And I want to talk about the risk factors. So those ACEs are numbered, one to 10, and there is a dose-response relationship. So the more ACEs you have, the more likely you are to exhibit some of the behavioral health concerns that we're talking about. One quote that I have here is compared with people who have zero ACEs, people with an ACE score of four are twice as likely to be smokers, 12 times more likely to attempt suicide, seven times more likely to be alcoholic, and 10 times more likely to inject street drugs. And ACEs are prevalent. The percent of the population who has at least one ACE is at least 65%. And the percent of the population who has at least four, or four or more, is at least 14%. So if you start thinking about children in schools who have been subjected to adversity already, we're talking about, at least, say, my school, it's about 50 kids. And our Transitional Learning Center, we really can only handle, you know, a fifth of that, if that. And these are the acute students. These are not students with ACE scores of twos and threes, who are also exhibiting behaviors. Now, I tend to agree with the school-wide approach, as I work with Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative, and that is their approach. And so we have done training in that. However, when the students are identified and are in crisis, we do need to deal with that through these types of programs. So we also have counseling in our schools. So we have outside counseling providers who come into the school. We give them space, and they see our students. We have like a direct pipeline for referrals. I'm sorry. I have a lot to say. But that works well, but there are concerns because of insurance. So some of those providers can only see people who have mass health. And some, you know, so the private, people with private insurance don't get the level of services, such as the CVHI wraparound services, which are so beneficial to families in crisis. So I would like to, that's one of the things I'd like to advocate, is more partnerships with schools and counseling agencies, and more look at, how do we get that type of wraparound service mentors in the community? How do we get behavior specialists to work in homes? How do we get that paid for by insurance that isn't mass health? That's, that's a big concern, because we do see that connection as being essential.
So if you'd be able, just to wrap up, and then I'm going to give you my card, because I see you have several pages more.
I do. I want to mention, can I mention some funding sources that do exist that we might want to capitalize on?
Why don't we do 30 seconds of that, and then, then we will be talking right after.
Yeah, sure. So the Safe and Support of Schools legislation does have a competitive funding source, 335, out of DESE, but it's very low funding. If you look at the comparison of what that is funded, and once again, somebody else mentioned, you have to apply for it. These are things we have to apply. We have this legislation that says we have to provide this, but schools actually have to apply to get this help. In the early education realm, there's the Family Support Programs of Parent-Child Home Program and Family Networks. Again, communities have to apply, and not enough families are benefiting from these services. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that.
Madam Principal, thank you very much for your testimony. And please, stick around. We'd be happy to take your testimony with the, I know you had several additional pages. So you want to give them to Tim?
I'll email them.
Very good, very good. We have now Brian Hart to testify, followed by, if she is here, Trina, Trina just testified. Brian, followed by Joan Wasser-Gish of the Boston College of Lynch School of Education. She's here. Brian?
Yes, hello. Thank you very much. My name is Brian Hart, and I'm going to talk to you about using social media marketing and an application, an app on your phone, to access and provide greater access for people who need mental health care with mental health care. So it's very similar, and Margaret, he and I haven't met you yet, but it's very similar to the Interface Program that you run with the William James College. So I'm a former Marshfield resident, and I live in Kingston. I've been married twice, and I have a Brady Bunch of three children from each marriage. And within that, I'm very passionate about this, because there's been suicide and depression in my family, ADHD, borderline personality disorders, and my stepson has autism. So in my 35-year career, I've been in retail marketing and cloud-based marketing platforms. So I want to bring all of that together and build a technology platform that's similar to, you might think of Uber or Airbnb, which are, you know, very big national technology platforms that put people need a service with people who provide those services. And so it's, you know, as I listen to all of these experts, and thank you for all your services in helping people with behavioral health needs, Plymouth Police Chief Pateri's challenge of all these different communities that people are in, or where they, they overdose and whatnot, you know, I think it's, it's an opportunity to bring all of these services together and have everybody be a part of this platform, whether they're clinicians or hospitals. And that's the opportunity that can be served through having a cloud-based platform. My most recent company I worked for was a company called Salesforce, which is a $10 billion company that has one of the best platforms out there, and it's growing very rapidly. So I would bring to bear those capabilities. I think using social media is the way to reach people. The beauty of it is that it's based on what people have used the internet for. And if someone, for example, Googled teenage depression, you can target them with information about teenage depression that's specific to them. And then there could be a link into this technology platform, where somebody would enter their insurance, their needs, where they live, and it would come up with the services that they need. And technology can be a wonderful asset to be able to do that. And it really would have that call to action. So it would be, here's someone that you can reach out to. This could be tied into a clinician's schedule and actually do the scheduling. I think that clinicians are going to love this, as well as companies who increase the productivity of their employees, and the insurance companies, because it's all about prevention. In my own cases, I've worked for companies that have EAP programs, and I never quite knew what they were for. And once I learned, I certainly benefited greatly. People understand that there's mental health services out there, given the parity, the Federal Parity Act of mental health and physical health from 2008. I think there's a great opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that, yes. I was passing a note. I think Dr. Joan Wasser-Gish could not make it here. She is, I called her. Oh, good.
Can I?
Please do, please do. Sorry, after Joan Wasser-Gish, I don't have anyone else signed up, so. Doctor, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Chairman Cantwell, and members of the commission. My name is Joan Wasser-Gish. I'm here today on behalf of myself and my colleagues at the Boston College Lynch School of Education Center for Optimized Student Support. And I'm going to talk with you briefly about the science emerging around integrated student support. And what we know about its potential to create environments and conditions that support behavioral health and the ability of individuals to withstand challenges, as well as the evidence demonstrating positive student outcomes and return on investment. So integrated student support, sometimes commonly called wraparound, is essentially a school-based strategy for either developing or procuring both school and community-based resources aimed at improving students' academic achievement, as well as their social-emotional outcomes. And it's driven at really the whole child, comprehensive needs, including those related to academic, social-emotional, behavioral, health, mental health, and family needs. There have been a number of recent research reviews of integrated student support approaches, including those by Johns Hopkins University and a national resource organization called Child Trends. They are finding a number of different models out there that are showing an emerging body of evidence about integrated student support approaches. But what's also clear is that the nation's most rigorously evaluated, effective, and cost-efficient approach to doing this is actually based right here in the Commonwealth. And it's a program that originated and is currently incubated in the center where I work. It's called City Connects, and it was developed about 16 years ago by researchers from Boston College, people from the Boston Public Schools, community agencies, and families, all working together. And essentially, when City Connects goes into a school, they have a site-based coordinator, who is a licensed school counselor or social worker. And they are, that person is essentially creating for every student in the school, a tailored set of prevention, intervention, and enrichment services. And they're doing that by leveraging existing services in both the school and the surrounding community. It's been successfully deployed in about 90 schools across 11 cities in five states. This year, they will serve around 30,000 children. And its primary model is an elementary school model, but it has been adapted and is from sort of pre-kindergarten up through an experiment in a community college in Ohio. That's my three minutes already? Oh, goodness. Let me move very quickly. I wanted just quickly tell you five things that we know, and additional information is in front of you. One is, we do have evidence that integrated student support can produce positive social, emotional, and behavioral outcomes. We have evidence from a peer-reviewed study showing improved effort or motivation, grades, and attendance. We know that it can also produce positive long-term academic outcomes. When this group of students was followed into eighth grade... When this group of students was followed into eighth grade, they closed two-thirds of achievement gaps relative to the state average on math, and about half of the achievement gap on English. We also know that when followed into high school, the four-year high school dropout rate was cut almost in half, and also reductions in chronic absenteeism over the long term. All of these are associated with students ultimately avoiding some of the more risky behaviors that overlap with school failure, truancy, and dropout. And we, scientists are really trying to figure out exactly why these long-term effects are in place. But very briefly, two primary reasons are that we think that it's creating a series of positive relationships that we know serve as protective factors to help children withstand challenges. And also, if we envision every child as having a developmental scale, this process of understanding what's on the negative and on the positive side, working to mitigate the negative and bolster the positive over time, seems to effectively tip the scales that are, and essentially creating a much firmer foundation on which we're then able to build both academic and social-emotional behavioral skills. I will leave it at that, there's additional information in front of you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so very much for your time, I appreciate it. And as we've said for others, I appreciate the written testimony and the openness for continued conversation. I know you were just at the State House recently testifying, so appreciate, appreciate your testimony. Any questions?
Yes, just one.
Please, Margaret.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm curious, can you just give us a budget figure of how much one implementation costs in a school?
Yeah, it does vary depending on the locality, but the primary cost is really personnel.
Sure.
This particular model relies on a licensed social worker or school counselor, and the way that cost is distributed varies very much community to community. The additional cost on top of that school counselor, I'll defer to the people who actually run the program, but I think ballpark, in most places I've seen the total cost, so counselor plus access to support, intensive training, coaching, technology, professional development, is ballpark 100,000. There are some communities that are reallocating existing staff in this kind of a role, and that's obviously a more budget-neutral decision for that particular community whenever that's feasible.
And if they do that, do, then does Boston College provide the training?
So, for folks who are enrolled specifically with the City Connects program, that it's essentially operating as it's an independent entity, and there is training and technology and professional development provided. One of the things that I mentioned in the written testimony is that we're now at a stage where we see that this has these long-term positive impacts, and we're really very interested in taking what we know works and making it much more widely available beyond City Connects. And so we've actually pulled together a statewide multi-stakeholder advisory board, where we have folks from the legislature, from the administration, we have many of the statewide organizations related to principals, school counselors, teachers, superintendents, we have community agencies, we have parents, we have many other folks around the table who are essentially helping us to design an infrastructure to facilitate the integration of education with social services, youth development, health, and mental health resources. And part of that is to make this much easier and much more feasible for any school that wants to do this for their kids, to be able to do so in a relatively cost-efficient and feasible way.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. All right, thank you so very much. Anyone else who had not signed up previously that's here to testify? Seeing not entertained a motion to close the hearing, either the judge, second, there we go. All in favor? Aye. Just for us, the household things, for the commission, by the way, our next meeting, November 14th, Tuesday the 14th, is our breakout session for all of our subcommittees, that's at the State House, at our Members Lounge from 2:00 to 4:00. And then the people will keep, Friday, December 15th open, we'll be having our next public hearing probably at, in Wallfam at Educational Development Corporation. Friday, December 15th, it looks like the next public hearing. Thank you, everyone, thank you very much to PACT TV for broadcasting, and of course, thank you to Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital for hosting us today. Thanks so very much.